Testing, one, two, three, testing. It's all right, you want? Good evening. We'd like to welcome everyone to our school board meeting. This is our regular meeting. Board members present in the boardroom, we have members Donnelly, Holloman, Jacobs, Lessons, Wilson, and Bellamy. Online, we have member Higgins. We also have our superintendent, Dr. Jarrett Bryant, our executive assistant, Ms. Amanda Foster, and we have Ellie Shaw, our student representative, and we also have a guest, Josh Pack. We're going to let Ellie introduce Josh to us after the pledge. So Ellie, if you'll lead us into the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, who stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the land.
Land acknowledgement?
On behalf of the Anchorage School Board, I want to take a moment to recognize and offer gratitude for the sacred ancestral lands of the Denina people. We acknowledge and appreciate that our offices, schools, and facilities are on these sacred indigenous lands, and we honor the traditional care that has been given to this land throughout generations. We are grateful for the opportunity to grow, learn, work, and create educational communities on this sacred land. We extend continued respect for the many cultures, creativity, and resilience of its indigenous peoples. Chinon.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Again, we welcome you to our meeting, and we thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District. We also would like to thank our students, parents, teachers, our staff, our school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talents, and your tax dollars. And with that, that brings us to item A3, approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move in second to approve the agenda as presented.
Madam President?
Yes, Member Donnelly.
Madam President, consistent with my motion on the agenda from our last meeting, where I thought it was appropriate to delay by one additional meeting the consideration of memorandum 129 regarding family partnership, I would also, this meeting, move to move the ASD memorandum 129 from action items to non-action items.
Can you speak more in the mic? We can't barely hear you, member. And can you just restate your motion, please?
Thank you, Madam President. I would move to, well, first of all, at our last meeting, I expressed concern that there was very short notice to the folks at family partnership, the parents and the families there. Before that, our last meeting occurred, and I felt it was more appropriate that the consideration be delayed for one week rather than be on non-action, or one meeting, rather than be on non-action last time, on our last meeting. So consistent with that, I would hope that we could provide them with a little more time. And so with that in mind, I would move that ASD memorandum 129 be moved from the action items to the non-action items for this meeting.
Okay, there, you've heard the motion. Is there a second? Not hearing. That motion fails. Not hearing a second. The motion before you is to approve the agenda as presented. We'll do a voice vote, please. Member Higgins is not in the room. Member Higgins, did I call your name online? I'm sorry. He is online. Thank you. We'll do a voice vote.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Donnelly?
No.
Member Higgins?
He's unmuting.
Member Higgins, I will come back to you. Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Higgins, are you able to unmute? Oh, I got a thumbs up. Thank you. And President Bellamy?
Yes. And that passes six to one. Thank you. Moving on to item B, our reports. We do not have a military report. We do have a B2, our Native Advisory Committee report. Good evening and welcome.
Hello, my name is Shandeen Suella Wendell. I'm a senior at Chugig High School, and I'm the chair of the Native Advisory Committee. Our committee consists of two students, four parents, and two teachers of native students. We meet monthly to discuss the spiritual, mental, and educational needs of indigenous families at ASD. Our goal is to improve the quality of life for native students in the district that provides them with culturally enriched experiences in our community. Tonight, I'm here to report on our four major accomplishments of this year and to provide two recommendations to the school board to better support native students. Firstly, every month, we meet with Paul McDonough and Helena Batman for the oversight and advisory of the Indigenous education program. Secondly, we have been promoting native languages to stop the erasure of indigenous languages in Alaska. Thirdly, we have provided the school board and administration advisory on policy like graduation regalia and land acknowledgements. Lastly, we have been providing input on the ASD curriculum review process, particularly the Alaska Studies curriculum, and we hope that the new ninth grade Alaska Studies course that ASD will launch next winter will better represent Alaska's indigenous stewardship of the land. The next part of our report is to make two recommendations to the school board. We ask that the school board considers these recommendations and makes action on them to better support native students. The first recommendation, we are asking that the district adopt cultural standards and develop a plan to enforce these standards. We have attached a full comprehensive report on the cultural proficiency that was prepared by Paul McDonough. We are asking this because our elders teach us that when a student is struggling with math or reading, oftentimes it's because of a cultural problem, not a learning problem. The second recommendation we are asking for is the school board to raise a district voice that acknowledges and promotes indigenous language learning. The United Nations has declared the years 2022 to 2032 the International Decade of Indigenous Languages, and our schools need an improved policy that will ensure that students can learn languages from our land. I will move to our informal opinions. We believe that the critical importance of healing wellness and spirituality in education. The NAC will spend more time discussing these next year, and we look forward to being able to dialogue more with community leaders to help come up with recommendations for improvements in the future. Thank you, President Bellamy, and the members of the Anchorage School Board for the chance to speak tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And so we will, I'm going to open it up for the board to ask questions if they have any, but thank you very much for that report. Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the report this evening and allowing me to attend the last NAC meeting. I intend to work with President Bellamy to, and Dr. Bryant, to get a vehicle, policy vehicle in front of the board, which allows us to discuss the recommendations as a policymaking body. So I appreciate that. Question on if there will be vacant seats on the committee coming up, and if there's any events that the committee has that might be a good introduction for someone who might be interested in joining the committee in the future.
There's a couple of members leaving, including me this year. This is my last year. I served one term, and so there will be seats open for like students and others, but we could ask Paul or someone later.
Thank you. And we will, we will do that. We will ask him. Other questions or comments? Can you say your name again for the record?
Shandeen Suella Wendell.
Shandeen. Thank you, Shandeen. Any other questions from the board? So your, the recommendation for cultural standards are, and I don't know how you or Ms. Batman might want to help with this, but are those the Alaska cultural standards that we're talking about implementing, or are we talking about a different set of standards?
So Paul McDonough, for the record, the starting point that we recommended was the Alaska Native Cultural Knowledge Bearers from the UAF Symposium, but we also do think that the Anchorage community has a lot more than just its indigenous people, and so we really want to invite like a steering committee sort of action so that all people can come and chime in on the standards and kind of prioritize and maybe redevelop some of them.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you for that clarification. And the cultural proficiency piece, is that part of the standard, or is that a separate idea?
So that came up because what's a standard without the ability to measure it, or the ability to measure another tool using the standard? So cultural proficiency framework in the report is a research-based way of being able to spell out where is somebody in terms of like being culturally, like at an incapacity for culture, all the way up to like culturally sustaining and culturally proficient?
All right, so it's a measure?
It's essentially, yeah.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. All right. Well, I do look forward, oh, yes, I'm sorry. Member Lessons?
I'm just now looking at what was attached to the agenda, and I just wanted to say that the cultural proficiency report is a sizable document. So I thank you for the time and the attention, and I look forward to spending time and thought with it and thinking and collaborating about next steps. So thank you so much.
All right. All right. With that, I thank you very much. Very good report. Thank you.
Giana.
Uh-huh, Giana. Okay, so that leads us to our next item, our next report, our student report. And I'm going to ask that you introduce our guests today, Mr. Josh.
All right. So next to me, I have my new president-elect Joshua Pack. He will be taking my position after I graduate in May, so we can welcome him to, welcome him to the board. All right, so SAB, or Student Advisory Board, held their second-to-last meeting on Tuesday, March 21st at 8:15 in the morning. To start off our meeting, we went into our report section where we saw a slideshow recap from our delegates who traveled to Juneau for the AASB Spring Conference. Looked like a super cool trip. Really glad that they were able to go. Then we heard from each school about a challenge their school has overcome or an accomplishment they've had recently. Then we continued our discussion on the resolution brought to us by Eagle River titled the AASA Vote Resolution, where as a group, we made amendments to the document, voted on it, and passed it. So that resolution now has SAB's full support. Lastly, we heard a presentation by Shannon Bingham about the school start time discussion. We talked about it, looked at the different options, took a survey of it, and brought that survey back to our own schools and student governments, so more students were able to reach it and fill it out. We are holding elections for our vice president, secretary, and public relations positions at our upcoming meeting, which is on Tuesday, April 11th at 11:15, and this is our last SAB meeting of the school year. Yeah, that's all I have.
All right, and thank you and welcome, Josh. We look forward to working with you. Ellie's not going to get away that easily. Um, Ellie's not gonna get away that easily. Uh, we have a, first of all, she served with us for two years. Uh, not just at the local level, but also at the state level. So she has represented the Anchorage School District very well. And today is her birthday. Well, it's tomorrow, but we won't see her tomorrow. So we're gonna sing Happy Birthday Today. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Ellie. Happy birthday to you and many more. Thank you. You are very welcome. Thank you. And now we look forward to graduation, graduation parties, and all that good stuff. So thank you. And that brings us to our goal monitoring, uh, report. Item C on the agenda. Completion of College and Career Plan and Student Attendance.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, so tonight we'll have two technical presentations. Uh, the first one will be our outcome monitoring report on college career planning. Next slide, please. So on this slide, it recaps the goal, interim goal 3.3, uh, is the, for the percentage of secondary students completing the AK Career, um, the AK Career Information Systems College and Career Plan, uh, by 2023 to 25%. Forgot to mention that. All right. And on this slide, uh, it describes the evaluation of performance on this goal and graphically shows our baseline of 10% from 21, 22 to the target of 25%. You'll also see additional details on the district's implementation plan in the bullet points at the bottom of the slide. Next slide. And this slide provides additional information related to this interim goal, including a pilot of the U-Scienc Career Discovery Tool and our partnership with Ford Next Generation Learning, who provides technical assistance to the district as we look towards adopting a career academy model in the high schools. And on this slide, it shows a timeline of major milestones related to the implementation strategy of this goal. And that was a very brief presentation on interim goal 3.3. We welcome any technical presentations here, uh, before we go into our next presentation.
All right. Thank you. We, again, we get the report this week. We will talk about it, uh, at our next. So you may continue to the next one.
Okay, great. We'll pull that up. Okay, so now we'll pivot to our next presentation on outcome monitoring of attendance rates, which is an indicator of our college career and life readiness goal. Uh, so on this slide, it states the goal that 90% of students will be college, career, and life-ready by spring 2026. And it provides a rationale for why attendance is an indicator for success in college, career, and life readiness. And on this slide, it displays graphically our percent of students with 90% plus attendance. On the chart at the bottom of the slide, you can see overall attendance rates as well, um, over time. As you can imagine, the pandemic did have an impact on attendance in a couple of significant ways in 2019, 2020, and 21, 22 that we can discuss further during our goal monitoring discussion at the next board meeting. On, and on this slide, it disaggregates attendance by special populations, uh, race and ethnicity, and school type. And you can compare them from 2021 to 21, 22. The last two columns show the percentage change between those two years. And on the next, and this slide, uh, details the, the rationale for why 90% attendance is the goal that we track and how it's connected to college, career, and life readiness. And this slide provides an overview of the approach to meeting this goal, and the bullet points list a few high-level strategies to increase attendance. And this slide shows progress to date on goals, um, through our five strategic pillars that include multi-tiered systems of supports, data discussions, professional learning, instruction, and curriculum. And we just have two more slides here that define the school types that we reference, and it specifies which schools, um, were included in the data sets. Uh, that concludes this technical report. Um, this will come back to the board at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Is there, yes, Member Lessons, questions on the technical report?
I think this is a technical question. So on Slide three, under 2019 to 20?
Which report?
I'm sorry, Slide three in the attendance report. Um, I'm asked, my question is with respect to that 85% number. Um, my memory of our data dashboard for attendance shows that during, when we pivoted to online learning in that spring, right after spring break, in 2020, in spring of 2020, so this year, um, kind of everybody had 100% attendance if they checked in, or maybe if they didn't even check in. So does that 85% incorporate sort of that fuzzy data?
Yes, and we can discuss that more, uh, next time, but essentially, our data is inflated for 2019, 2020 because of the pivot to online learning.
Okay. Any other questions on the technical reports? Clarifications? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Bryant. We look forward to having that conversation. And that brings us to our first hour of, uh, public comment. Thank you. Perfect timing, yes. So due to a certain, um, surge in student testimony, we moved them all, uh, up to the front as we normally do. We just needed to, uh, most of them signed up tonight, so we needed to make that adjustment. But I'd like to welcome you to our first of two opportunities to ta, to, uh, have an opportunity to provide public comment. The board has set aside one-hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting for public comment. Public comments in excess of one hour will be heard during the second opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. Um, sometime, as well as, uh, comments, uh, are, can be put in writing if you'd rather do it that way. So during public comment, board members will not answer questions or engage in discussion. Um, this is the public's time to speak and the board's time to listen. The school board welcomes the public to observe and contribute to our meetings, uh, through their comments. However, to be productive, our meetings must be structured and civil. ASD conducts public meetings under Robert's Rules of Order, a set of rules for orderly meetings that has been used since the 1800s. These rules require the board and public to be civil and respectful of each other, of his opinions. When you entered the boardroom, uh, available to you would have been a blue and white sheet that provides an overview of the decorum for this boardroom. Uh, in, in short, uh, there are a few requirements under Robert's Rules. Uh, one, do not attack a member or, or speaker's motives. No profanity or foul language. Refrain from, uh, disturbing the meeting. No cheering, applause, outbursts, or waving of signs or posters. If you have handouts that you'd like to share with the board, you can give them to Ms. Foster, to my left, and she will make sure the board gets whatever the handouts are. As President of the Board, it is my duty to enforce these rules of civility and decorum. As such and consistent with Robert Rules of Order, I have the authority to rule any speaker out of order for violation of these rules and/or fail to conduct themselves in a civil manner, manner. Um, additional details, as I said, can be found on the handout that, that is at the, at the door. Uh, as, in keeping with our policy, we, um, provide our students with the initial opportunity to speak. And so I would like to invite up Lincoln, Deberry, and Greta Deberry. Come up to the front. Have a seat. Welcome. And yeah, your mics are already on, so you can position them as you need to. State, and please state your name. And then you have three minutes. Each of you will have three minutes. All right, Lincoln.
Lincoln Deberry. My name is Lincoln, and I am a Family Partnership student. I am here today to ask you why. Why are you revoking the charter from Family Partnership, your longest-running and largest charter school for over 25 years? Family Partnership has inspired countless students to pursue their passion and work to meet their individual needs. Whenever making a big decision, you need to ask why. I believe the Anchorage School Board has not asked why enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Lincoln. Greta, whenever you're ready.
Greta Deberry?
You have three minutes.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Greta, and I'm a senior in high school at Family Partnership Charter School. I stand here today, or sit here, to ask you to please not dissolve our school. I've been part of Family Partnership since sixth grade, and I have been given a multitude of freedom and opportunities in my education. My individual needs in education have been met better than they could have been met in another program. My sponsor teacher at Family Partnership is incredibly helpful and supporting and celebrates along with me and my family as I now have been accepted into nine different universities and have been offered in thousands of dollars in scholarships. Throughout the challenges that I faced during my time at Family Partnership, my sponsor teacher has supported me through it all. And because of the opportunities I have at Family Partnership, I was able to overcome many obstacles. With the freedom of Family Partnership, I have been given opportunities to explore my personal interests. I have been able to pursue and learn about different career options. Our school has given students the ability and freedom to explore the career, the world, and themselves in a safe space. They have been able to choose for themselves and discover the right path for their future. Is it fair that the students of Family Partnership now have to pay for the actions of adults who couldn't get along? The school itself is not the problem, and dissolving it will not solve anything. The students of Family Partnership are depending on you, the school board, to make the decision that is best for us. I am asking you to vote to retain our charter and let Family Partnership continue helping students like me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Greta. I'd like to welcome up Benjamin Shepherd. And I think McKenna Bowden is supposed to be online. Welcome, Benjamin.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Shepherd. Hello, my name is Benjamin Shepherd, and I'm in the sixth grade at Inlet View and IB PYP School. First, I would like to thank you for supporting our program as the first and only international baccalaureate primary years program in the state of Alaska. The sixth grade will be presenting our exhibition projects next week. Exhibition is a result of the student-led inquiry into the real-world topic that we are passionate about. Students in our class are exploring women's rights, animal trafficking, energy in Alaska, and the consequences of war, and several other topics that relate to our unit of inquiry. We'd like to invite you, members of the board, as well as Dr. Bryant, to come and visit our school to see what we have achieved. Thank you. Uh, I have some schedule packets.
Thank you. And bring them, give them to Ms. Foster? Thank you, Benjamin. Okay, next online, we have, uh, McKenna Bowden. Maybe it's Bowden. And I'm not seeing her. I'll, I'll circle back around. All right, let's welcome Olivia Higgins and Haley Finch. Thank you. State your name for the record, and you have three minutes each. Olivia.
My name is Olivia Higgins. I would like to tell you a story. There once was a boy who lived in the wild. He ran free through the meadows, laughing as lush green grass tickled his bare feet. Every day, he wandered to the stream, a glistening metal bucket in his hands. He filled it with water and picked it up, the crystal-clear liquid sloshing merrily. He delivered the water to a nearby village. The people shattered with joy as they caught sight of the boy. Most times, he went back for more water, but he always brought enough. He loved seeing the fruit of his labor, rich brown cultivated soils starting to sprout tiny green leaves, much larger plants bearing apples, berries, nuts, and corn. He watched as new villagers grew from drooling toddlers to joyful children to giggling teenagers, and finally to adults. But in what seemed like a blink of an eye, everything was gone. Villagers raided the village, taking the boy hostage and imprisoning him in a thick iron cage. The villagers forced him to look on as they stole everything from the village. Laughter died away, the gurgling cries of starving infants rising into the dark sky. Children's faces turned pale and stone-like, lacking the excitement and joy the boy loves so much. Many families left and never came back. Plants shriveled and yellowed, the dirt became cracked and dry, littered with rotten fruit and dead leaves. The sun never shined, instead hiding behind a thick, dark blanket of clouds. Through all of this, through all of this, the boy sat, helpless as he watched his world reduced to a barren wasteland, the villagers ruling over it with a cruel fist. Months passed, the boy grew weak and frail, surrounded in hopelessness. The village was gone, the villagers had confined him, there was nothing to live for. So there, in the cage, the boy died. Generations passed, winds blew layers of grime over the boy's body in the cage, eventually burying him completely, forgotten. Then one day, a pair of archaeologists wandered through the land, searching for precious artifacts, when they dug up the preserved skeleton of the boy. They opened the cage with a creak and gingerly examined the boy's bones, wondering who would enslave and abandon something so precious. Now, although this story may be fictional, it's a lot like what's happening today. The villagers are the families of Family Partnership Charter School, families and children who are growing, learning, and thriving. The villagers are ASD, sapping the charter of its resources for their own benefit, and in the process, enslaving the very thing keeping the school afloat. The boy, he represents freedom. The water he brings are opportunities to grow for the villagers, just like Family Partnership's freedoms are opportunities for its students to grow. And just like the archaeologists dug up the boy, people will look back at Family Partnership's success and wonder, why would someone discard something so precious? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Haley?
Hi, I'm Haley Finch. I'm 16 and a high school sophomore. My brother and I have been a part of FPCS since first grade. I've just returned from competing at the Biathlon National Championships, where I brought home three gold medals to Alaska. This accomplishment was a big moment for me, but honestly, it had little to do with the actual wins. For me, it's rewarding for bigger reasons. I have planned and worked for this moment the last three years. These medals represent the only planning, planning and execution of my required physical training, but they also represent the equal amount of planning and work that I put into my education. Partnering with FPCS enables me to join sports at Service High School. I am on the Nordic Varsity Ski Team, where we placed second at the state championships this year. I have completed a college semester at UAA, and I have a 4.0 GPA. My mom works hard to build my school agenda in advance, so that it blends the best way possible to fit with my yearly training schedule. And I am not alone. I have been inspired by many other current FPCS students and graduates who are also successfully living up to their fullest potential by similar methods. Yeah, you can accomplish these same things attending a brick-and-mortar public school. I see how some of my other teammates manage it. Most are stressed on lectures and tests that they are missing when we are traveling to compete. And when we return, they have to put in extra time to catch up on their assignments. I never have to carry the stress of catching up because I have the time, resources, and support to create a plan that complements my sports training and traveling. The pressure of being both a high-achieving student and an athlete is undeniably stressful. But the advantage is that I am in complete control of the pace of my schedule. I have the ability to budget time that I need to focus on my classes. My responsibility in planning these things has given me important life skills. I have gained the confidence and tools that helped me start two of my own businesses and time to connect and give back with my community. Next week, I will be volunteering in Aurora Village to teach kids how to ski and introduce them to biathlon. I will be joined and mentored by one of our current USA Olympians and inspiring local female business owner. I couldn't give this time to others if I was tied to the traditional school calendar. My curriculum will roll through the entire summer so that I will have the time next spring to complete even bigger goals. Accomplishing this as I partner with FPCS makes it possible. There are other programs that I could be involved in, but I really appreciate that our school is led by parents and teachers and staff and students, people involved in our program. People who have invested interest in supporting students, giving them opportunities that fit their dreams and schedules. It is our governing board that keeps us on track, and while they may have moments of spirited debate, I see that everywhere. Please let Family Partnership continue to be the best charter school in the state. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to invite, uh, Zachariah Smith and Paige Robertson. Welcome.
Thank you.
State your name for the record, please, and you have three minutes.
My name is, uh, Zachariah Smith. Um, my name's Zachariah Smith. Uh, thank you for letting me come up and, uh, talk to you guys. And, um, I'm a senior and I'm heading off to the college of my choice, uh, this year, this fall, and, um, I would like to share my journey with, uh, Family Partnership and homeschool. And um, I would like to share my journey with Family Partnership and homeschool. Education has been a struggle for me due to my dyslexia, which does not allow my brain to process words as fast as my peers. Through homeschool, I've been allowed to take extra steps and time then to help me combat this struggle. Meanwhile, I've been able to excel with my other subjects utilizing hand-on activities and verbal skills while my language arts has been given time to catch up. While I take this time, I eventually caught up to with my public school peers and I actually exceeded them. My parents utilized public resources to help me, but made sure my education never slowed down as it would in the classroom environment. Because of my homeschool um, and the freedom it offers, I've been able to graduate with a GPA of three point seven and twenty-six thousand dollars for scholarships of my choice. I'm studying aviation. Uh, this is to the commitment of my parents to make sure that I never felt stupid because of my dyslexia. And I've had the same opportunities as any other student would. I honestly didn't even know I struggled with it in middle school, uh, even when things were evening out. Homeschool has allowed me and my family to explore many different sports and activities um, that other public schools could not offer, such as biathlon, ski jumping, and rock climbing. Um, all of us have had such rich experiences and have excelled at all of our different interests. With the freedom a homeschool provides to travel and arrange my own schedule, I was able to be named Junior National Ski Jumper, traveling to competing in different competitions outside of the state. My family has taken four road trips across the US for the past ten years. And because of homeschool, we've been able to bring education on the road, like literally. It's been great. Um, and this year, I've been given the opportunity to take a class at King Tech High School to pursue my aviation um, interests. Although I am grateful for the opportunity, I've been shocked by the amount of time wasted in the classroom due to managing a large classroom and keeping with the brick-and-mortar school necessities. So I'm asking you to refrain from destroying the opportunity for kids like me to pursue my education where my needs um, can be met by the people that know me best, my parents, um, and partnership with the public school system. So please vote against dissolving the Family Partnership Chartership School. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Paige, you're next.
My name's Paige Robertson. I've been a part of the school that Family Partnership hosts for four years. I would like to spend my three moments in silent protest of this movement.
Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to invite Giovanni Moserigian and Rachel Utic. And I apologize for mispronouncing your name. State your name and you have three minutes each.
Good evening, my name is Giovanni Moserigian. I am a student enrolled at Family Partnership Charter School. I am grateful that for the last three academic years, my mom was able to find an alternative schooling plan for me outside of my neighborhood public schools. When I attended my neighborhood public school, I had great teachers. However, often it was difficult for them to do their jobs, but it was not their fault. These teachers had to follow the ASD model and had no other choice. The class sizes were very large, which resulted in constant interruption, which prevented me from learning. I was also called names when I would respectfully ask people not to be disruptive so I could hear what my teachers were saying. My teacher would often say when the entire class would be confused over math lessons. I understand this is not a traditional way of teaching math, but I have, but I have to teach math in this way because I have no choice. This is what ASD requires me to do. When we had to stay at home because of the COVID protocols, I found it, I found it to be a very terrible situation. When I attended these online classes, no work and effort was required of me and my classmates. I was not required to attend online meetings and was not required to complete any assignments. Along with this, none of the little work that was done was even graded. I can go on, but I do only have three minutes. Because my mom had a choice, other than ASD Public School, I have better opportunities for learning. I have been taking classical curriculum courses that my mom has chosen for me. My typical course size is approximately ten students. Some benefits of this are having one-on-one time with my teachers during course time and the teachers and students respect each other. In my math courses, I have grown confident in the ability to problem-solve and articulate how I came to the conclusion of the given geometric proofs. My teacher encourages us to explain how we got our answer instead of memorizing facts from a textbook just to pass a test. In my composition course, I have grown to enjoy literature. This is because I have learned about the different styles of authors and how their viewpoints affect the stories. There are many more benefits to my education because my mom has a choice on what education works best for me. My personal experience is that ASD does not keep its promises or support its own teachers and family, and families. This is why our parents need to have a say over FPCS and not ASD. Dr. Bryant and ASD Board members, please work with the APC Board and be mentors and not destroyers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Rachel, whenever you're ready, state your name.
Good evening, my name is Rachel Utic and I have been a student at Family Partnership Charter School for ten years. I would first like to take a moment to thank Member Lessons and Member Wilson for always encouraging me and my fellow students to advocate for things that are important to us through public commenting. Today, I am advocating for my school's charter. Two weeks ago, I received a letter recommending that Family Partnership's charters be revoked and that they transition from a charter school to a correspondence school. The letter also stated that the charter needed to be revoked because of poor APC conduct and the negative effects it was having on students. That simply is not true. Me and my fellow classmates and peers have unanimously agreed that APC's conduct has had absolutely no negative effects on students. Secondly, there are major, major fundamental differences between charter and correspondence schools. Revoking FPCS's charter would result in detrimental changes. The first being that we would no longer be able to choose our principal. Without that freedom, we would have no way of ensuring that the principal that is chosen will align with our school's visions or goals. Additionally, we would no longer have the freedom to choose curriculum because as it stands now, we have a waiver under our charter allowing for curriculum choice. If we are turned into a correspondence school, we will no longer have that freedom because we will have to align with ASD policy. Thirdly, our APC has done a noteworthy job of properly budgeting our school's funds. Without the APC, we will most assuredly fall into the same financial struggles that many other governmental bodies are facing. With that being said, don't ruin a proven model. FPS, FPCS students are thriving and outperforming traditional ASD students. We value our school's vision. Me and the students behind me are calling upon ASD to do what is best for students and keep our charter intact. Otherwise, we will have no choice but to seek other schooling options. I would like to take the rest of my public comment time in silent protest against this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next two people are online. Do we see Madison Shoup and Kaylee Shoup? Okay. I'll try to circle back. Uh, Lucy and Isaac Smith. Lucy Smith and Isaac Smith. I couldn't hear what he said. What, what did you say? Are you Isaac? Oh, you turned it in writing? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Isaac. Okay, I'd like to invite Thomas Owen and Josh, Josiah Shabaka. All right, whenever you're ready, we'll each have three minutes. Thomas?
Good evening, my name is Thomas Owens and I'd just like to examine how allowing Family Partnership Charter School to retain its charter aligns with the core values and beliefs that ASD professes. The first core value that ASD professes is that of potential. Every student deserves the opportunity to achieve his or her potential. Family Partnership's charter ensures that individual students have a custom school curriculum and this ensures that their potential is fully met. The parents are the primary educators and thus can decide what is best for their child in collaboration with their child. The second core value and belief of Family Partnership, of, excuse me, of ASD is high expectations. The district will foster a culture of high expectations. Family Partnership Charter School students score quite highly on all testing and grades and there is no reason to mess with success. The third core value of ASD is that of accountability. The district will be open, transparent, and accountable to the public. There has been no misconduct reported or by the students of Family Partnership Charter School and there has been no good reason, uh, no proof that any of the alleged things have happened against, that there's been no misconduct, excuse me. There's so far no good reason to close the Family Partnership Charter School or destroy its charter. The fourth core value and belief of ASD is that of safety. All schools and departments will be safe and supportive. If Family Partnership Charter School is closed, that will mean that many of its students are forced into brick-and-mortar schools. These schools are not safe, as has been proven by the many incidents of drugs, sex, and violence in them. The home is the safest place for a student. The fifth core value and belief of ASD, excuse me, is that of responsiveness. Public education should be responsive to an ever-changing world. FPCS is as responsive as it gets when it comes to individual students. The curriculum can be tailored to fit the person and as the, and the motto of Family Partnership is, we cut the jacket, we cut the kid to fit the jacket. Or, excuse me, I'm very sorry about that. We cut the jacket to fit the kid, not the kid to fit the jacket. This does not align with how ASD performs right now. You hold future, I, I'm now addressing the entire board. You hold futures in your hands. You hold my future in your hands. Your duty is to these students. You hold all the futures of Alaska, of the Anchorage students in your hands. These kids rely on you, don't let them down. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Josiah? State your name for the record.
My name is Josiah. Good evening, I'm Josiah. I'm an African-American BIPOC student at FPCS. I am submitting this testimony in my personal capacity and I was inspired to speak here tonight by Member Lessons who encouraged us to speak up and provide public comment when we are passionate about an issue. The termination of FPCS's charter directly violates this board's core values and beliefs. This board believes in equity, which means providing every student the opportunity to reach their full potential and closing the achievement gap while moving all students forward, partially through high-performing neighborhood and alternative schools. FPCS is a high-performing alternative school. I perform in the cumulative math and ELA proficiency of the rest of the students in ASD by thirteen percent and twenty-six percent respectively. In fact, charter schools outperform traditional schools across the board. In math, Alaska's BIPOC charter school students outperformed Alaska's BIPOC traditional school students by eight percent in 2017, six percent in 2018, and eleven percent in 2019. In ELA, those same students outperformed their peers by six percent in 2017, eight percent in 2018, and again, eleven percent in 2019. This pattern holds across the board for multiple demographics. The success of FPCS's students can be attributed to our parents' involvement in our education and in our school's governance. The APC holds a critical role in our school. FPCS's mission to provide a unique, parent-driven, and student-centered education opportunity is fulfilled through our parents' and students' representation on our APC. Dissolving the APC would remove this representation, restricting parental rights and involvement. It would fundamentally change FPCS as a school. The ASD's past concerns about the APC have been addressed and remedied. Presently, the only concern that remains outstanding is misconduct. The APC is an elected body with term limits for each member. This means that, given enough time, all of the current APC members will be replaced. This current APC's conduct is not indicative of future APC's conduct. The ASD's concerns lie not with the existence of an APC, but with the existence of the current APC. Terminating the charter is a permanent solution to a temporary problem. It is an extreme approach to issues stemming from personality politics. Rather than dissolve the APC entirely, I propose that the current APC be replaced immediately. We could elect a completely new APC and even include one to three representatives from ASD to ensure that these new members are instructed and trained in Robert's rules to the district's satisfaction. This is but one of many solutions to the concerns ASD has raised. Terminating the charter is not the solution. It's blowing up a mountain to address a molehill. It will harm students more than it will help them, and it's not in the best interest of our school. I would urge the board to find a more rational solution and consider that more than twelve hundred people have signed a petition stating that they would leave FPCS if this charter is terminated. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Thank you both very much. I'd like to invite Stuart Sims and Asa Utic. Stuart Sims, is that you? Are you Asa? Okay, we'll start with Stuart. State your name for the record. And you both will have three minutes each.
Hello, my name is Stuart Sims and I am a student at Family Partnership Charter School. I enjoy having a hand in my own education and it's given me the ability to take part in great programs that have increased the quality of my education. I see no meaningful reason why revoking the charter would bring about positive change to a school or be good for our students. Vote no to revoking our charter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hey, Asa?
Hi, my name is Asa. I'm a junior from Family Partnership Charter School. I love our charter and would hate to see this amazing school be altered, especially after- especially after investing eleven years of my life there. Terminating this charter is going to change the very heart of our school. I feel much has been said and will be said in opposition of this proposal. So I'd like to spend the remainder of my testimony time in silent protest of the highly alarming proposed termination of the charter.
Thank you. I'd like to invite, I think it's Johanna Sims and Avery Reed. Welcome. We'll start with Johanna.
My name is Johanna. I'm a junior at Family Partnership Charter School. I do not want my school to become a correspondence school. I believe it should remain a charter school. Our parents, teachers, students, and staff have an active voice in the oversight of our school. The charter has helped FPCS to achieve the success it has had as a school over the last 25 years. Thank you for taking the time to hear the testimonies of myself and fellow peers. Do not vote to revoke our charter school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Avery?
My name's Avery Reed, and I will ask you to please not destroy Family Partnership. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, uh, thank you, thank you guys. Kylie Reed? Kylie Reed? I'd like to circle back and see if McKenna Bowden is in the room? All right. Thank you, Kylie. State your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Kylie Reed, and I am an eighth grader that homeschools through Family Partnership. I want Family Partnership to remain a charter. I've had a really positive experience with them and want others to have the same opportunity I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we are continuing on with Mr. David Boyle on the phone. Mr. Boyle, can you hear us? Star six to unmute.
Can you hear me, President Bellamy?
Yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. President Bellamy, school board members, I'm David Boyle testifying for myself. My testimony will be about trust. Trust is a belief in a probability that a person will behave in certain ways. It's sort of a contract between two parties. In this case, one of the parties is the superintendent and board. The other party is the community, that is, the Family Partnership Charter School parents and students. The superintendent has promised several things according to FAQs. Number one, the curriculum will remain the same as long as it follows state law. By the way, the state law is only cited, not the exact wording of that law. Number two, the allotment will remain the same, which now start at the minimum $4,200 for elementary students. Three, the principal, business manager, and dean's students will be kept. And four, all funds will remain with the school. There's one problem with this one, because the Family Partnership Charter School charter states that, quote, "Upon termination, Charter School shall immediately return any unused funds to the district," end quote. The question is, can Anchorage trust the superintendent and the board to keep these promises? The results of tonight's decision may result in many parents removing their children from the district, which will result, will result rather, in lost state, local, and federal dollars. You see, these parents know what's best for their children, and they're looking out for them. These parents want the best education for their children, and they want to tailor their children's education so they can succeed in life. And Anchorage citizens trust the superintendent and the board to keep their promises? This is the key for the Anchorage School District to maintain its trust and credibility with the citizens of Anchorage. As you know, the next few years will be a difficult challenge for the district, especially funding. The district has too much infrastructure, schools, for the decreasing number of students now and in the near future. Will we believe you when you say you have to close schools? And by the way, you're not closing any of them. Will we believe you when you say you are reducing costs as much as possible? Will we believe you when you say you have the best interest of all students in mind? Will we believe you when you say, "Just trust me"? The question which may be decided tonight will not be just about a single decision. It will be about decisions to be made in the future. Will the people of Anchorage trust you if you make the wrong decision? Will the people trust you if you terminate a charter for one of the highest-performing schools in the district, meanwhile keeping open failing neighborhood schools? Can we trust that you will keep your promises and not parse those promises above to our parents and their children? Trust is a promise between the district and the parents. Will you keep your promises? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, we have Stephen Holmstock. Stephen Holmstock? Stephen H-O-L-M-S-T-O-C-K.
Thank you. My name's Stephen Holmstock. I'm from Ambler, Alaska. Well, member of the Edwerson Whaling Crew and Barrow. The father of Stephen Paul Holmstock, who is currently working for the Anchorage School District for the 21st Century Program. And 2013, I took him out of Wonder Park Elementary School because he was falling through the cracks. He was, the school was overcrowded. They were shorthanded and seemed to be short-funded, and so he was pretty much invisible there. So I looked for a place to take him outside of the public school into a possible charter school. When I heard about the Alaska Cultural Charter School, my son was able to get in through lottery. And right away, when he entered into the school, his education and his attitude and his overall grades began to change. He became more self-aware, more culturally aware, began to thrive there. I'm, I'm just grateful for the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School and for the progress that my son has made there. Though he hasn't been there for, for, he's in the 11th grade now at Bartlett. But, uh, he's, uh, he was able to get into the Alaska Native Science and Engineering Program. And during COVID, we had to send him back to Ambler where he wasn't able to continue. So when he came back, he chose to go to Bartlett where he's doing very well there. And I believe the foundation that the school gave him there, especially with teachers like Mrs. Rhea, who was recognized by, President Obama is the number one teacher in the US. I don't know if you know about her, but she's amazing. She was my son's teacher. And all the other teachers there, they've done such a wonderful job. I'd love to see the school moved out of East High and into potentially the Abbot Loop Elementary School where they can have the room where they were at Wewawa. They had plenty of room to move and to, to do their cultural events. They had the playground. They had plenty of room. They weren't so stifled there, and they were able to accomplish so much more. And I want to thank you all for giving me the time to come here today and let you know the benefits from my son's perspective, his education there at the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, sir. Next, we have Robin Peckrow and Michael Patterson. Please come forward, please. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes each.
Good evening. This is an excerpt, and not the worst, from the book The Bluest Eye by Toni Morrison. The Bluest Eye by Toni Morrison. The chapter, this chapter contains a letter to God. It was written by a character named Soped Church, a pedophile. This is going to embarrass me, but I'm going to read it because any person suffering from rape, incest, pedophilia, or sexual abuse of any kind needs to be protected from monsters. The monsters are living in the pages of this book. As he addresses God, "You remember, do you, how and of what we are made? Let me tell you now about the breasts of little girls. I apologize for the inappropriateness," is that it? "The imbalance of loving them at awkward times of days and in awkward places, and the tastelessness of loving those while belonging to members of my family." Do I have to apologize for loving strangers? But you too are a miss, Lord. How, why did you allow it to happen? How is it I could lift my eyes from the contemplation of your body and fall deeply into the contemplation of theirs? The buds, the buds on some of these saplings, they were mean, you know? Mean and tender. Mean little buds resisting the touch, springy like rubber. But aggressively daring me to touch, commanding me to touch. Not a bit shy as you'd expect. They stuck out, oh yes, at me. Slender-chested, finger-chested lassies. Have you ever seen them, Lord? I mean, really seen them? One could not see them and not love them. You who made them must have considered them lovely, even as an idea. How much more lovely is the manifestation of that idea? I couldn't, as you must recall, keep hands, my mouth off them. Salt-sweet, like not-quite-ripe strawberries. Covered with the light salt sweat of running days and hopping, skipping, jumping hours. The love of them, the touch, taste, and feel of them was not just an easy luxurious human vice. They were for me a thing to do instead, instead of Papa, instead of the cloth, instead of Velma, his ex-wife, and I chose not to do without them."
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Patterson?
Hi, my name's Michael Patterson, for the record. Uh, I'm a member of the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School Academic Policy Committee, and I'm just testifying today because I want to thank the school board and the administration for really sitting down with us and taking the time to address our concerns about the current location of our students and our staff and teachers. Uh, it has not been easy at Betty Davis's High School for our students and families. And, you know, outside of my position at the school, in my, I do a lot of other stuff personally, and I can say that this is probably the first time that I've ever worked with a government entity that I've actually felt like I've, that we, I've been heard, and that I've actually been, my concerns have been addressed, and I know for the other APC board members, I think we all feel very similarly. And I know that you're all deciding later this month on if we can use Abbot Loop Elementary to house our school. And I would just like to reiterate that, you know, we can't accomplish our cultural mission at the current location. You know, ANCCS is a, is a very unique community because of the cultural mission. And I can say that as also being a parent and having a student, a first grader there, that I too have also seen my son do so well just in the first year that he has attended the school. Uh, he wasn't able to attend kindergarten publicly or at a public school because of the pandemic, and I was a little concerned on how he would be in a public setting. And I'm just completely amazed at what his teacher, Ms. Martin, has been able to accomplish, how responsive the staff are and the principals, and it really, the amount of success that is at that school that our current location just does not meet. The fact that they can do that with what they have now is pretty astounding and pretty amazing. These kids deserve a proper building. The students, the staff and the teachers deserve a proper building. And, you know, I just really, whatever you all decide, I feel much more comfortable because I really feel like ASD actually appreciates the cultural mission that we're trying to accomplish. And I just wanted to thank you personally. And, you know, I obviously, I hope we, you make the decision that we can use the building, but I really appreciate that you all have addressed our concerns and that, um, you know, we've all heard. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Next, we have Carolyn Weisman.
Hello. I'm Carolyn Weisman. My name is Ulepingang. My English name is Carolyn Weisman. I'm a current member of the ANCCS Academic Policy Committee. Uh, I'm a former teacher of the Charter School, and I'm their current JNYO and NYO coach, and our athletes are awesome. Uh, what I wanted to kind of echo a little bit what Mr. Patterson said is, thank you for bringing up the discussion, for the ability potentially to move into Abbot Loop Elementary. As a teacher, when, in my time, my first year with the Charter School was at East. And my counterpart, it was her first year as a teacher in general. And I cannot express how resilient and how strong and adaptive all of our staff, our students, all of our families are. They're a school of choice. We, they choose to come to ANCCS, and everyone loves our school that attends it. And we had Dr. Aix come in last year, and he said we had for our demographics the highest percentage for the mobility, meaning that when students come to our school, they stay at our school. And that goes to show how strong our cultural mission is and our values that we teach at this school. I want to tell you a story about a moment last year within this school. Uh, I was in my prep time, and Mrs. Kaganic, our UBC teacher, was demonstrating seal butchering, and she was teaching them all the different parts of the seal and what we use those parts for. For example, the heart is high in iron, so it's important that elders eat the heart. Uh, they all had the opportunity to learn how to clean out seal intestine. And Ms. Kaganic and Ms. Kay looked at these kindergartners, and they're like, "What do you, what do you think this is?" And, uh, they're like, "Oh, it's a kidney. Do you have a kidney?" And this little kindergartner, he goes and he points at his knee. And they're like, oh, it's a kidney. Do you have a kidney? And this little kindergartner, he goes and he points at his knee. And they have an amazing opportunity to connect traditional values to modern way of life. And being at East is difficult. Being at East is very difficult for our families, for our kids, for our school. And I, Koyana Hawak, and Ashish Doikshen, Kagasa Kung for discussing the ability for us to be able to potentially move somewhere else. So, thank you.
And thank you very much. That ends our first hour of testimony or comment, public comment. We are now moving on the agenda to item E. The consent agenda. I'd like to also note that additional public written comments can be, are attached to the agenda, so you can read those online. What is the will of the board? Consent agenda?
Madam President, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second?
Moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented, consisting of ASD Memorandum Number 124 Personnel Report, ASD Memorandum Number 075 Award of Contract and Reallocation of Funding for Roaming Middle School Special Education Relocation, Memorandum Number 118 Acceptance of FY '23 and '24 Creekside Summer Learning Grant, and ASD Memorandum 119 Approval of Change Order and Contract Modification for Betty Davis East Anchorage High School Earthquake Repairs. Are we ready to vote? I forgot, Member Higgins is online. We have to do a voice vote.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Higgins? I'll come back to him. Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
He's having trouble with his, what to call it, mic. One is unmuted, it looks like he's, can't get it unmuted, so we'll...
And the answer is yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And so we will correct the record for Member Higgins. And that passes seven zero. Consent agenda is passed. I'd like to take a five-minute recess for the board. We'll be back in the room in five minutes.
Recording stopped.
The motion will be read and then we hear the public comment.
And then any of that could happen thereafter.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's just a lot of listening.
Yeah.
Dr. Bryant, I sent a revised version of the amendment. If you have any feedback on it, I sent you as well. I just added a line about current program choice.
Okay, that doesn't violate the law.
And I'll make that clear verbally. I think that should go unsaid because all of our schools have to operate within the bounds of the law. So I'll verbally say that. I feel like that we have to add it to everything. What's kind of, do I add it, do I not?
Everything we do should be within the bound of...
As far as I know, if we're not doing, please compile a list.
Because I do worry on that specific item, we need to crack down on certain things.
And if that's, that's a separate conversation because, yeah.
No, makes sense.
Is she in person? Okay. And I'd like to invite Teresa Hints, Hensy. I think I did it wrong, Teresa, again. Sorry. Welcome. State your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hello, I'm Dr. Jessica Parker. Good evening, members of the school board and community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. I'm the principal of Family Partnership Charter School, and I have served there for the past four years. Our unique approach has benefited our students in the ASD in numerous ways. We know that our partnership with ASD gives our students access to valuable resources, such as classes at the neighborhood school and services for students with different learning needs. It's clear here that we have built a very strong community. And that community is made up of a lot of people who are very passionate about alternative education. They care very deeply about their families, and they're dedicated to the work that they do. I want to tell you that we have resilience and adaptability to face what comes. And you can count on us to put our students first. No matter what decision is made here tonight, Family Partnership will continue to offer innovative programs and curriculum and vendor resources. We will continue to provide our families and students with a high-quality education. We will continue to be a school that values and supports our staff. And we will continue to provide an environment where our families are supported and our students can learn and grow. This will not waver. It is in our name, Family Partnership, and our mission, which is partnering with families and increasing student achievement. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Teresa? Is it Hints or Hensy? Hensy.
Yes.
Second time. Thank you. You have three minutes. I'd like to also invite Heather DeBerry up, please. Whenever you're ready, Teresa, state your name for the record.
My name is Teresa Hensy. Dr. Bryant assures us that nothing will change under the banner of a correspondence school. And I believe he is sincere in this assertion. However, this is not something that can be guaranteed. If every teacher, staff member, board member, and administrator left Family Partnership, the school would remain at its core unchanged. It is protected by the charter and all the waivers, bylaws, and structure that has been put in place over the years. It is protected by the input of parents who choose the difficult path of homeschooling their children and the input of students who thrive under their tutelage. However, as a correspondence school, one change in administration at the district level or at the school level can fundamentally change the direction of the school. As a correspondence school, one change in ideology by any current or future administrator can make Dr. Bryant's assurances null and void. As a charter school, the mission remains intact, no matter the staff or administration. It is impossible to explain to someone who has never homeschooled and never worked in a homeschool environment, all the nuances that make FPCS completely original and unique. What we do can't be explained in one or even multiple conversations. If you talk to every parent in our school, their experiences with the school and with their sponsor teacher would be different from every other family. A correspondence school may be able to mimic some, even many, aspects of this charter school, but it would pale in comparison. And in a short time, without the charter to protect its mission, would evolve into something unrecognizable, becoming more and more like the options already available to every student in this district, making sure that the students who found a path that fit their needs would be required to try and fit inside the "one-size-fits-all" box of education. Revoking the charter would rob current and future students of the ability to find their own unique and individual path through the educational landscape. I implore the members of the board to try and recognize that taking the extreme action of revoking Family Partnership's charter is detrimental to every entity in the Anchorage School District. The problems FPCS faces right now can be resolved, especially with the help and oversight of ASD. So I pose some questions for your contemplation. Have there been any other solutions suggested? And if so, why haven't they been implemented? Has there even been one conversation with ASD leadership and the FPCS APC board as a whole? And if not, how can a decision of this magnitude be made without all the relevant information? Who exactly benefits from revoking the charter? Can you be assured that this action would benefit students? I would ask that if any of these questions have raised even the slightest doubt in deciding to revoke the charter, that you pause and give serious thought to the negative consequences this action will impose on our school district. Give the school time to get things in order so we can continue giving our students exactly what they need. Don't allow politics and misinformation to jeopardize your oldest, largest, and most successful charter school and all of the 1,700-plus students it serves. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to invite Robert DeBerry to come forward whenever you're ready. Heather DeBerry?
Hi, I'm Heather DeBerry, and I am a parent and a teacher at Family Partnership Charter School. And while I'm moved by all those students who just spoke to you, I hope that you are as well. Over the past seven years, I relied on the charter and its APC to allow me to meet the individual needs of all of my FPCS students, including my own. This has been made possible by the 25 years of preceding APC members who have protected our choices and allowed homeschooling families a place at the table here at ASD. I have personally homeschooled my own children with IDEA, Matsu Central, and out-of-state homeschool correspondence school, and finally, here at ASD with Family Partnership. As a teacher and a parent, what I'm most proud of here at FPCS is the ability to customize an educational plan for all students and families, right here in my own Anchorage School District. With FPCS, I can work with families and students who may have gone outside our district to reach their needs, and I'm able to utilize the partnership with parents and the incredible resources here in our community and our district to curate a personalized plan for each and every one of my students. Alaska Charter Schools were created with an APC for the purpose of guaranteeing input from the important stakeholders, including parents, teachers, and staff, and students. Though this may be messy, at times, the transformational education that so many are looking for happens when more people have a seat at the decision-making table. Please don't assume the normal top-down approach knows better than their own, the students' own, parents know themselves. The special sauce in the charter school is the APC and the ability to make sure that those voices are being heard and contributing. From the highest allotments to the expansive choice to curriculum, to the homeschool-friendly teachers, the mission of Family Partnership Charter School is held up by the charter and the APC. Without the FPCS bylaws and the waivers grounded by the charter agreement, there is no protection for the very things that make our school different, such as allotment surplus rolling back to students, year-round schooling, low overhead costs, tight fiscal management, and a transformative leadership within the APC that is not top-down. That's just to name a few. The charter allowing the parents, teachers, and staff to have decision-making power is the reason for the success and growth you see today. I have a sticky note in my workspace. Brings a smile to my face every day. It has a simple message: "Thank you for not letting me drop out. I'm going to college in the fall." Signed, my student. This and other small messages from families remind me of the opportunities. I wish that each of you could feel the relief and love that a desperate parent who has found a path for her child where they thought no path existed before shares with me and other FPCS teachers. It is magical. Please don't do anything abruptly to change the magic that is seen here each year at Family Partnership Charter School. I ask you to protect it so that it can give the promise to other students.
Thank you very much. Robert DeBerry and Benjamin Higgins, please. Welcome. State your name. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Robert DeBerry, and I am here to tell you that there is a lot of people testifying tonight, and they deserve a paycheck from ASD. Because they are the ones that are doing your jobs, the administration's jobs, the director of charter schools' jobs, and even the school boards. These are the ones that have poured over hours of APC meetings and seen the behavior from past board members and the steps that new members are taking to create change in a positive direction. These are the people that have scoured the school's charters and bylaws and see that ASD administration is not holding up their end of the contract. They can see that the administration's reasoning is not based on fact, remains one-sided, and refuses to admit that they are the ones failing our families and students. These are the people that are coming up with ideas and asking questions, talking to APC board members, charter school staff, and other parents, all of which are things the administration and school board should have been doing from day one. As I look around this room, I do not see an administration that wants to be a partner. I see an administration that wants to be in control and doesn't understand homeschool. I see an administration and school board that has lost the trust of this community. I see an administration that lacks experience and thinks their way is the best way. But yet, I see a school of 1,700 students that thrive and achieve and graduate and go on to do great things. I ask the school board, a school board with two members up for reelection and a large bond package, please do the right thing, the thing that is best for all these families and mine. I ask you to direct the administration to work with Family Partnership. Otherwise, like so many others, I will move my children out of ASD. And the only vote this board and the administration will get is that of no confidence. It's simple. Roll your sleeves up. Do the work. Make it work. If you get to a point and you can't make it work, at least you tried. But I see a group in front of me that doesn't even want to try. Sad. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Lynette Marcellus up. Mr. Higgins, whenever you're ready.
I am one of the thousands of parents who partner with Family Partnership to educate kids. So I've been watching the hostile takeover of Family Partnership very closely. Reminds me of a story. There once was a boy who had a bug collection. Under glass, he lined up his 90 butterflies, a pin driven through each thorax to secure it to the backing board. The labels read Alpenglow, Baxter, all the way to Wonder Park. The boy wanted, most of all, to keep his collection in perfect order. One day, the boy went butterfly hunting. He saw one with wings of emerald green fluttering over his head. Exquisite and rare, he coveted it for his collection. He planned to mount this butterfly between Eagle River High and Fire Lake. The boy raised his butterfly net and waited for the perfect moment to strike. That is the moment we find ourselves in tonight. Family Partnership is that beautiful, rare butterfly. By morning, we may have a pin through our thorax. Many are asking why the justification given for revoking the charter is obvious pretense, the delusional rationalization of an aggressor, like the boy netting the butterfly. Family Partnership is a 25-year success story. So why is ASD dissolving the charter and snuffing out our representation? Is it money? Control? Intolerance of accountability from parents? The butterfly is shouting, "Listen, I am rare and beautiful because I am free." At Family Partnership, teaching parents customized education for every child. There is no more potent educational tool for making students thrive. Family Partnership exists for its students, not its administrators. Kids deserve to keep the opportunities provided by Family Partnership. Removing parent representation will kill all that is beautiful about the school, as surely as a pin through the thorax. Truly effective education is not one decision for all, but one decision for one student, individualized, customized. That's what Family Partnership provides. Our charter protects, and your vote could destroy. If you want to improve ASD, don't delete the Family Partnership charter. Duplicate it everywhere. Revoking this charter would be a costly mistake. We could choose out-of-district homeschooling options. We could shout the truth that parent choice gives everyone a voice and improves education until every voter demands it. I assume you can do the math. Your vote tonight could awaken a sleeping giant. Anchorage School Board, choose wisely.
Thank you very much. Ms. Marcellus?
Good evening, board members. My name is Lynetta Marcellus, and I've been a teacher at Family Partnership for 14 years. Voting tonight to dissolve the charter is going to be detrimental to our graduating seniors. Once you vote to dissolve the charter, 30 days later, the school name changes. Our seniors haven't even graduated yet, and seniors have until June 30th to complete their courses and still be considered a graduating senior. Our seniors who have applied to universities and for scholarships have applied under the name of a charter, but their diploma is going to say correspondence, which, as a university, you would question. From what I understand, universities admit certain types of students from certain institutions by quota, and they probably admitted our students based on the fact that they were from a charter. The word "charter school" on a diploma looks way better than correspondence. My seniors have been calling me worried about how this is going to affect their future, and they do not want their diploma to say correspondence. So why does this vote have to be done at such an inopportune time? Wouldn't it have been better to do this vote and transfer in the summer months, allowing our seniors to finish at the school they chose, which was a charter? ASD says we have to do this right now because it's affecting students. While this fast-track vote is affecting students, students are educated at home, and our school has been doing what we do for 25 years. Everything runs smoothly at our school, and how the APC acts at meetings hasn't ever affected their education. But this current situation of a change does affect their education. Secondly, I would suggest a solution that makes both sides happy. I've heard our APC has offered to step down and seat new parents as a solution to not dissolving the charter. So if it is what I hear, just an APC problem, why don't you vote tonight to give the APC 60 to 90 days to change out their entire board? And if they do, the charter remains. And if they don't, it's automatically dissolved. They need this amount of time to abide by bylaws, Roberts Rules, and Open Meetings Act to replace board members. There's only four of nine members, not counting students, that remain. There are three board members who have recently been seated that should stay on, that were on after the demand letter was sent. They should stay there. That's two teachers and a parent. They would provide stability for new parents or new people coming in onto the board. Also, you need some current members on the board to vote the new members on. If you replace the entire board all at once, you have 11 brand-new members without experience and can run into the same issues we have right now. A few other suggestions: The demand letter didn't tell the APC what the district wanted them to do. It didn't list demands. It just asked them to answer as to why they voted the way they did, which they did answer. I read the responses. I hope you did. They were pretty good. I hope the school board has read those. If I am, as a teacher, I'm not performing up to standard, I get put on a one-year plan of improvement instead of fired immediately. Our APC wasn't afforded that same courtesy.
Thank you very much. Carleen Bowden and Hannah Udick. Which one? Bowden? Welcome. I'd like to invite Amy Sims up as well. Whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Hannah Udick, and I am a 2020 graduate of Family Partnership, the school that brought me to where I am today, about to graduate from UAA with my bachelor's degree. I began at FPCS at the age of five. One of the primary reasons my parents chose to go through FPCS is because of the freedom of curriculum choice. If the existing charter provides families the freedom it needs to choose any curriculum or blending of curricula to instruct students, this is a chief reason that FPCS parents are successful in educating their children. Why we have the best numbers in the district, this is why I was successful. As not only a former student of 13 years, but a former APC board member of three years, I am very familiar with our unique system. Our vetting process has been developed to ensure that public funds are not used to purchase religious materials, but religious material purchased by parents' own funds may be used as a valid curriculum and submitted for work samples. If ASD were to dissolve the charter, this would immediately change as state statutes are very clear that correspondence programs must align with the curriculums of the district. In short, if you vote tonight to revoke Family Partnership Charter School's charter and convert it to a correspondence school, you will be taking away freedom in curriculum, which means families will most assuredly go elsewhere. Without students, the school will obviously not last, which would funnily enough leave the Anchorage School District with millions of dollars that our school has in its reserves due to our careful budgeting. If you vote yes on this motion, you will be proving that this body cares more about fixing their budget deficit crisis than the success of your students. I like to think the best of the school board, that each of you deeply cares about the success of the children in Anchorage. Please prove that to us by voting no on this motion. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Amy Sims and Siobhan Mersing. State your name for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Amy Sims. Thank you for taking time to listen to all of us this evening. I love my school, and I believe our charter has served the students of Family Partnership well over the last 25 years. I understand it can be difficult, even frustrating, when a board is seemingly messy. The questions I would ask you are: Is the termination of our charter the best course of action for our students and families? Is there another, less extreme option ASD could propose? As a sponsor teacher at FPCS, I serve almost 100 students. I have been told by many of my families, if ASD dissolves our charter, they will be looking elsewhere for their children's education. They have told me they chose to become a part of Family Partnership because it is a charter school. They are not interested in an alternative or correspondence education. They feel they've been blindsided by the proposed termination of our charter. I hear from the district nothing will change except the APC board will be dissolved and a name change. That is not exactly true. Here are some ways some of our students will be affected by the termination of our charter. A charter school looks better for students when applying for colleges and scholarships. Correspondent schools are not held in as high an esteem as a charter school. Two, the contract will be dissolved between FPCS and ASD with its guaranteed waivers, such as exceptions made for our year-round schooling and curriculum choice. Three, the request for program changes, which can then be implemented quickly, will not be as accessible. These are boots-on-the-ground opportunities parents have to make sure their students' needs and academic goals are really being met. Four, no longer will the fiscal philosophy of the charter that has lasted 25 years be in effect. Our charter and bylaw commitment has been to maximize the amount of money spent on each individual student and limit the amount of spend on overhead. This fiscal philosophy truly does put kids first. Lastly, it is hard to hear the school administration and others say, "It is a done deal. You need to accept it," before this vote tonight has even happened. I hope a decision hasn't already been made by some of the board members before they have heard the concerns of all the stakeholders. I implore you, do not rush into this decision. Once again, I ask, is there another, less extreme option ASD could propose that would keep our charter intact and build trust between our families and ASD? Is the termination of Family Partnership's charter the best course of action for our students and families? Please vote no to revoking our charter and fundamentally changing our school. I think I have a couple seconds left. I know, as I've heard from people and seen letters come back from school board members, that they think that we misunderstand that you're going to dissolve our school. I understand you want to change it, and I believe my parents believe or understand that you're not dissolving the school itself, but fundamentally, you'll be fundamentally changing the school if you take away our charter. So please don't.
Thank you very much. All right. State your name, please.
Hello, my name is Siobhan Mersing. I have six children. I am here as a community member and a Family Partnership Charter School parent. I think that changing our charter program into a correspondence school would be a mistake and have large negative impact on our students. We know that restructuring organizations has negative impacts, that they cause stress, worry, create uncertainty, instability, et cetera, as you have heard tonight. I keep hearing that nothing will change, but we know that that cannot be true. Many accusations have been made against the APC board of our charter, but they seem to be the only people showing me that my student is at the forefront of their thoughts. I find it interesting that last week, on the same day, I got three emailed responses. None of them actually addressing my concerns, but all sharing the same brief message and links to the frequently asked question and the superintendent's message to our own charter families. I got those messages from our superintendent, the president, and the charter liaison. I have heard very little from our principal in support of FPCS. What gain is it to put this program in jeopardy? Why change a charter that is growing and thriving? Because I haven't heard how this will actually be better for our students. These impacts won't be at only an employee level, which our teachers are amazing, but also the education of my children. While it is said that the decorum of the board has negatively impacted our children's education, I can promise you that that is categorically false. But choosing to dissolve our charter absolutely will. It is the APC board that has kept our children's individual needs at the center of this program. I understand that people complain of disagreements, but I have seen some of the meetings on YouTube and they seem very mild. Have you seen them? And the ones that are from before July, which we're talking about decorum, are completely missing. I would love to be able to actually see what's happening in these meetings to be able to know exactly what the decorum has been like. My daughter graduated from FPCS last year and the reason why we chose to send her to Family Partnership, she has gone to public school until ninth grade. Her freshman year of high school, there were school lockdowns, there were fights in the bathroom, there were threats of violence, and she just felt like another number. When we started her at FPCS, she got an amazing contact teacher, which happens to be next to us, who helped her to be able to manage her own education. She was able to take college courses that my middle college student, he can't because there are limitations, but she could. My 10-year-old, who is an FPCS student, attended a public school last year and he ended up having major anxiety issues. The bullying was through the roof and so I put him back in this charter school. And my concern is that if you dissolve this, we lose such a valuable resource that has been so much to my family. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. I'd like to invite Gabby Ide and Tiffany Dennis. We'll start with Gabby. Introduce yourself and you have three minutes. You will both have three minutes.
Thank you, I'm Gabby Ide. Thank you for listening to us tonight. I know it's gone on a long time. I'm really impressed to note that we haven't had one parent, student, staff member of any kind agree with the recommendation to dissolve the charter. I think that's worthy to note. I wanted to share with you that Family Partnership is about individualized education, which you've heard a lot about tonight. It meets the needs of each and every child in a way that suits them to bring out the best in them so that they can continue what we're trying to build here. Many of the students that spoke tonight will take note at how you vote tonight as to whether or not their comments made a difference. And they will either be disenchanted and they will have to operate outside the system, or they will see that your minds are changed, as they should be, and that you vote to save this charter and they would love to take your seats in the near future and lead Anchorage School District in a positive direction. That's what I hope happens tonight. I really do hope that you retain the charter and that you show these students that what they're saying, what they're seeing, what they're doing matters. Because it does, it really matters. We've proven the success of the charter school with outstanding outcomes, with the highest SAT scores, the highest graduation rates, and excellent student achievement. The freedoms provided under the umbrella of our charter make this possible in ways a correspondent school just cannot. I found it interesting, the data that was brought up today about attendance and the struggling attendance from the pandemic. Do you know whose attendance wasn't affected by the pandemic? Family Partnership Charter School. I also noticed that some people made some remarks about the FAQ page. It was very helpful. What was concerning about the FAQ page was that there's actually two petitions out. One of the students already mentioned is a petition to leave Family Partnership Charter School if you do not retain the charter. There's over 1,125 signatures on that petition to date. There's another petition with regard to the FAQ page that you plan to retain our principal. There is a petition, a vote of no confidence for our principal because we believe, many of us believe, that the reason we're here today is because of our principal and because the APC has not been allowed to do their job in removing leadership that does not help our school and replacing it with leadership that does help our school. We have a principal now who does not homeschool her children and we would like a principal who understands how homeschool works and supports the APC so that we can stay within our budget, that we can keep teaching our children, that we can keep moving them in the direction that we see is working best for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tiffany Dennis.
Good evening and thank you for having me here, members of the board. I'm a homeschool mom of over 30 years and I have had students on and off with Family Partnership for the past 25 years. My current student began Family Partnership in third grade and he's set to graduate next year. I am deeply saddened about your consideration of dissolving the APC and transitioning Family Partnership to a correspondence program. The FPCS charter has been a valuable education option for nearly three decades. Alaska is already full of homeschool correspondence programs. There are only a handful of homeschool charter programs available. In Anchorage, families who currently want to participate in an ASD charter school to homeschool their children currently only have two choices: Family Partnership or Frontier. Both are excellent programs. Having two charter options for families allows an option for all families who homeschool in ASD to find a program that is the best fit for their family. If you vote yes tonight, this leaves Anchorage families with one option to choose from if they want to homeschool with a charter school. Yes, families can choose to homeschool with one of the ASD correspondence programs, but there are already numerous statewide correspondence options. ASD does not need to add to this list. After all, I would think the school board wants to have homeschool options that encourage Anchorage residents to remain a part of ASD. Instead, please reconsider your vote and look instead to resolve the issues the APC of Family Partnership has without ending our charter. In reality, through all of the charges, there does not seem to be justification to dissolve the APC at this time. I understand that the district may at its discretion terminate the contract for the charter school's failure to meet education or goals or fiscal management standards for any default or any position of their contract or for any other cause. But after reading the charge letter from ASD to FPCS on February 13th, it is clear there are no poor fiscal management allegations or problems with educational goals. The charges instead are vague and fall under the default positions of the contract. After reading the allegations, it seems egregious that the school board would move to dissolve our charter. Please consider more reasonable options and a reasonable amount of time to allow Family Partnership to fix these internal issues, issues that have caused no problems for the Students of Family Partnership. I implore you to carefully consider your vote tonight, your vote to save our charter school that has served our community so well for nearly three decades.
Thank you both very much. Haley Essay and Heidi Essay. And we'll start with Haley. State your name for the record. And you will each have three minutes. Thank you.
I'm Haley Essay. I am a homeschool graduate, college graduate, and I am currently working on my master's in business. I also suffer from a learning disability. I have a very hard time learning and comprehending what is on the page. Being able to be homeschooled, I was able to have the opportunity and the time that was allotted to me, that would not have been allotted to me if I was in a public school system. I have several friends who were in the public school system who had the same learning disability as me and they didn't get the opportunity that they should have gotten. If ASD is currently understaffed and has too many students, we all know that, especially in the Department of Special Needs, there's not enough teachers or teacher aides to help these students. They will fall through the cracks and be swept under the rug. Being homeschooled, you are not swept under the rug. You have the time and the opportunity to learn and have the correct time that you need to process the information. Going through college, there were several times where I contributed my knowledge and my understanding and my study skills going back to being homeschooled and learning the proper techniques and the ability to change how I learn things than not the standard way. I truly hope as we are processing this information, that you're truly listening to what we have to say and that you have a growth mindset and not a fixed mindset. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Whenever you're ready.
Hi, my name is Heidi Essay. I'm a retired homeschool parent. I homeschooled my seven children, five of whom are university graduates, working and contributing in our community. The two youngest are currently pursuing their university educations. This is due in large part to the choice we had to homeschool our dyslexic children. We did not homeschool through Family Partnership, but have many close relations and dear friends who did and are. You might wonder why a woman whose children are out of school and did not partner with Family Partnership would care about the possible closure of this charter school. I'm here to tell you. First of all, I'm concerned about the precedent this could set. I would hope that a decision of this magnitude, one that affects the largest, most fiscally sound, and according to standardized tests, the most educationally successful school in the district would not be made lightly and certainly not in haste, which so far seems to be the case. Should all ASD charter schools fear that their charter can be pulled mid-year with minimal notice? Should every parent who has chosen to educate with an ASD charter school begin to question the longevity of their program as well as the integrity of the Anchorage School Board who were elected to serve and represent them? The Association of Alaska School Board website states, "The school board's primary function is to provide each student with an education of the highest quality in keeping with his or her capacity to learn." The board is ultimately responsible for school district operations, but the board does not get involved with the day-to-day operations of the school. We trust you, the elected board of the Anchorage School District, to do just that. Family Partnership Charter School is indeed a partnership and that partnership with ASD allows many families to provide each student with an education of the highest quality in keeping with his or her capacity to learn. My second concern is the potential lack of choice for parents. Choice is a fundamental freedom we enjoy in this country. We appreciate the choices available to us in the state of Alaska to educate our children in the way that best fits our children's learning styles. Should Family Partnership become a state correspondence school then? According to the state of Alaska Correspondence Program Regulations, families will not be able to choose the curriculum that best fits their child's needs, but will be required to use the ASD-regulated materials. As the mother of children who learned differently, I can attest to the importance of being able to choose what will work best to educate each child in the best way possible for their unique situations. Please do not limit families' abilities to choose what is best for their children. If the current Academic Policy Committee at Family Partnership needs to be reorganized, then trust the parents of the school to make sure that happens. If administrative leadership at the school is lacking in integrity and leadership schools, then take action to rectify that situation. But don't be so rash and short-sighted as to pull the charter on a school that has been producing for the past 25 years exactly what you, as the ASD school board, promised to do: provide each student with an education of the highest quality in keeping with his or her capacity to learn. Thank you for your service to our community. We trust that you will act with impartial integrity in this matter.
Thank you both. I'd like to invite Teresa Kress and Rachel Reese. Ms. Reese will be telephonically. I'll come back to her. Welcome. State your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hello, I'm Teresa Kress. Good evening, Superintendent Bryant, Madam President Bellamy, ASD School Board members, and leadership team. Thank you for the opportunity for so many to share their thoughts with you tonight on this very important matter before you. My name again is Teresa Kress and I've been with Family Partnership Charter School since the day we opened 25 years ago. All four of my kids spent their entire educational career at the school and it was perfect answer for our family and will be forever in your debt. I remember that first year when ASD took a chance on us and sent us our first liaison to the APC meetings. She was Assistant Superintendent at the time. Many of you may remember Carol Como. Over the next 15 years, Superintendent Como carefully guided us through many changes and encouraged us along the way until she retired in 2012. Even after her departure, we have enjoyed support and much-needed guidance from the leadership at ASD. One of the strongest lessons I've learned in my career is to try to always put things in context, to look at a situation while considering contributing factors. The context for Family Partnership in the last two years starts with COVID happening. All of a sudden, ASD needed to become experts in teaching students who are learning at home and you called on us to help and we did. Our school and teaching staff doubled in size as we tried to meet the needs of these families who were new to the concept of homeschooling. All this was happening while we were working on rechartering, which is an all-hands-on-deck event. During that process, we became aware of some serious mistakes we had made and worked on robust solutions to correct those mistakes. We are grateful that you saw our Herculean efforts and just over a year ago, in December 2021, the ASD school board gave us a 10-year contract. We do not take that lightly. That leaves us with the remaining concern about the degrading decorum in some of the meetings. There were strong positions being held and an obvious division. I think we would all agree that strong statements and emphatic behavior are not unique to our school. When we look at elected officials even in our city, we see people who had passionate views about complex issues and probably wished they could have a few do-overs in some of the ways they've presented themselves over time. This is replicated in every state's legislature and most certainly in our nation's capital. Over and over again, we have regular people in leadership who are passionate about their views and yes, because there is so much at stake. So tonight, it's important for this body to ask, why are these folks so emphatic? What is compelling this body to have such strong exchanges? Why is there such division? What are the roots of that division? And when you take a deeper look, I believe you'll find that our governing board has been strongly debating issues because there is a lot at stake. Our charter, we know, is at stake. I would ask this board to please pause, consider the context, and meet with our APC. Ask them about the high-stakes issues. I believe you will gain a much clearer understanding of what brought us to this place. We ask you not to abruptly absorb by our high-performing school that serves almost 2,000 students with excellence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rachel Reese online. We'll go on. James Wildman and Tyler Goldad. Welcome, state your name.
Good evening, my name is James Wildman. I am a current member of the APC for Family Partner Chartership, Partner Charter School, and I'm here today to support the ASD administration's recommendation in memo 129. While I've only been a homeschool parent for a few years, I do understand how board governance works and Family Partnership's governance is broken and in my opinion, beyond repair. As a member of the APC of Family Partnership, I've seen a majority of the board with voting control continually refuse to focus on our students and instead serve their own interests and personal vendettas, be it removing a chair twice, micromanaging the principal, or placing members under investigation to eliminate their ability to vote. My current status for almost two months now with no investigating taking place. I've considered resigning many times, but have hoped that with the nine people who have recently resigned from the board, that new members might come in and help. However, the new members seated are only those who agree with the current majority that hold sway with the entire board. This includes a recent teacher seat, which was appointed in opposition to an advisory vote we solicited from the teachers themselves. You've received numerous reports of how Family Partnership is mired in a quagmire of personal agenda by a current member in his wife's lawsuit against ASD and our principal. He continues to serve on the APC today. The recent board approved answers to the ASD demand and investigation are another example of how the dysfunction manifests itself in new ways and constantly will continue unless you take action. My most recent effort was to get the entire current board to resign. And it was a great suggestion that's been brought up a couple of times tonight. That motion made, seconded, spoke to by me, the question was called, and it was voted down with no other discussion, again, by the same majority. The only way to be sure that Family Partnership continues to serve students now and into the future is the proposal in memo 129. And that's to end this charter. I urge you to approve the recommendation to end the charter and hold ASD administration accountable to the assurances they've given that the school will remain unchanged with the exception of the removal of this dysfunctional APC. Thank you for your time and thank you for serving our community on this board.
Thank you very much. And next, I'd like to invite Tyler Goldad. State your name for the record. I'd also like to invite Shad Schopert.
My name is Tyler Goldaddy. Good evening, Superintendent Bryant and Anchorage School Board. I served as the Chair of the Family Partnership Academic Policy Committee from May 2022 to March 2023. The last year of the Family Partnership APC has been incredibly chaotic. The chaos started in May of last year when a teacher married to an FPCS APC member was non-retained. Shortly after that, the previous chair was dramatically stripped of the position and I was gifted the position. The fractured state of our APC led us to seek a contract with the Alaska Association of School Boards, or AASB. Fortunately, the contract was approved and we had AASB attend the majority of our meetings for several months. AASB was able to observe the state of our board and support our efforts to come together. They quickly recognized our APC as one of the most dysfunctional they had ever seen. Unfortunately, progress was very slow due to constant tension and conflict related to having an APC member whose wife had been non-retained continue to serve. It is worth noting that the non-retention was appealed and upheld by the Anchorage School Board. The situation worsened when the non-retained wife of the APC member filed a wrongful termination lawsuit against the Anchorage School District and Family Partnership principal. This meant that the FPCS APC had a member with an active lawsuit against the FPCS principal who is employed by the APC. It was at this time AASB determined they could no longer work with us due to the lawsuit. The Director of Charter Schools sent our APC a letter urging us to take this situation seriously and let us know that ASD was paying close attention. In navigating this significant conflict of interest, our board rightly voted to investigate it and assigning an impartial investigative committee of five in accordance with our bylaws. The impartial committee came back with a clear statement that this represented a conflict with voting on all board issues. Shockingly, our APC proceeded to disregard the findings of the investigative committee and voted to very narrowly define the extent of the conflict of interest. The result of ignoring this conflict increased the dysfunction of our APC. Eventually, we received the ASD Notice and Demands Letter, which was a clear warning that our APC was way out of line. Working through the questions in the letter on short notice was painful. The majority of the APC mired in disregarding the conflict of interest chose not to answer any of the questions directly. So here we are tonight with memo 129 up for consideration. This memo is a result of our long history of overstepping the APC role disregarding district politics.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Schopert.
Hello, my name is Shad Schopert and I'm regrettably here to speak in support of the termination of FPCS charter. My family has been a part of FPCS going on eight years. I served on the APC as a member and the Chair between May 2019 and September 2022, until the APC became such a toxic environment that my wife and I could no longer be a part of it. Tonight, you have heard and will continue to hear how amazing FPCS is. You've heard how we depend on choosing our curriculum. You've heard how our students achieve amazing things and how we love our school, our staff, and our teachers. You've heard how parent, student, teacher, and staff involvement is so critical. All of these things and more reflect how well the school has continued to operate under the amazing leadership of our principal and her dean of students. The thing is, we aren't here because of our school or our principal. John Adams said, "Facts are stubborn things. And whatever may be our wishes, our inclinations, or the dictates of our passions, they cannot alter the state of facts and evidence." The school board, the public, and our school community need to remember that the fact is that the APC is the reason we are all here today. The fact is, the APC is the subject of board memo 129. This APC is at fault. To give even more context, the fact is that over the last 18 months, there has been nine APC members leave before fulfilling their term. The APC only has 11 members total and nine left early. The APC only has 11 members total and nine left early. Fact is, in the last 10 months, this APC has had three different chairs. One forcefully removed, one gave up the chair due to pressure from the APC, and the third resigned the chair and her seat after having only served three, three-ish weeks. Now the APC doesn't have a chair. The vice chair is acting. The fact is, the APC has divided the teachers into those that support the APC and those that support the principal. The fact is that outside of approving the budget and correcting some grammatical errors in our bylaws, this APC has done very little business that helps or affects our students. The fact is that the APC has focused on petty adult vendettas while ignoring things that benefit our children. The fact is that the APC has consumed a significant amount of the resources from ASD in order to mitigate the risks posed by, to ASD by this APC. This has been to the detriment of other charter schools in the district. The fact is that over the last year, our school has essentially been operating exactly as Dr. Bryant has proposed, without a functioning APC. There are those of us that want to partner with the administration to help guide the transition to a correspondent school. We want to help formulate the academic advisory committee. We want to work with the administration to ensure that the concerns you hear tonight can be addressed in the new transition to being a correspondent school. We want to be part of the solution, not the problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call John Zimmerman and Kathleen Reyes. Kathleen Reyes. Okay, let's try Stephanie Cornwell. She's online. Okay. Welcome. State your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm John Zimmerman. What a wonderful outpouring of comment regarding the importance of charter schools and thank you to every student and parent who gave testimony. Regarding Family Partnership, ASD administration has issued demands to the Family Partnership APC since February of 2023. In the first letter with an unusually short reply time, there are assertions made that are based on incorrect or incomplete information. ASD administration claims the APC is unwilling to take responsibility for the matters listed in the letters. But does ASD expect another board to take responsibility for things in these letters that were not true? Surely not. The demands effectively require another board to take responsibility for vague and sometimes untrue statements and instead of these statements, why not? Why not for the benefit of so many students work with us like many of us have asked? You can see in the APC meetings where replies to that letter are constructed that the APC genuinely wants to work with ASD but is confused because of the statements made in the demand letter that are not true to what we've witnessed ourselves. Although someone with ill intent will not admit to wrongdoing, neither will someone who genuinely didn't do anything wrong. I stand behind the true statements APC made in reply to the demand letters and I can't speak for the APC, but I want to work with you. And I'm not the only one. Will you work with us? You claim the APC has broken laws, but in your letters to the APC, you do not state any specific law that was broken since the renewal of the charter in December 2021. What was listed very specifically are events that occurred in 2018 and have been fully remediated since then and have not recurred. How can we work with you in this matter to ensure compliance? One letter from ASD administration to APC references some kind of thorough investigation, but neither I nor any other APC member I'm aware of was contacted by ASD. That can't be much of an investigation. You can do better than that. How about connecting with each member of the APC or as a group to discuss concrete ways the school can continue as a charter school like so many parents and students have testified it should? There is very little specifically written in the demand letter for the APC to act upon. How can the APC be expected to learn what is needed to work toward a remedy when we're left to guess? Again, we want to work with you and we need clearly defined objectives that we can accomplish. As you've heard, many families want the school to continue as a charter and I do too. As I sit here and testify, as I did in December of 2021 as well during the re-charter effort, I want to do all in my power to ensure the success of Family Partnership Charter School as a charter school. I've given every bit of my effort. My family and I have endured nearly endless attacks from people as you've just heard and I stand behind the diligent work that I have fought hard to complete. Please, I beg you to have the decency to take time to hear the real rest of the story before rushing to a hasty decision based on partial information. For that sake of so many students who count on their success, on the educational opportunities they receive of Family Partnership, please give it a chance to remain a charter school.
Thank you, sir. Next we have online Stephanie Cornwell. Can you hear us, Stephanie? Star six to unmute.
I think I'm unmuted now.
Yes, you're up. We can hear you. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Um, my name's Stephanie Cornwell and I'm a former ASD teacher, statewide special ed administrator and a Family Partnership, uh, parent. I have two kids there and without Family Partnership, there would be no way to fuse disability, supportive services, private therapies and schooling and still not kill over dead at the end of the night, um, trying to make it all work. And it is vital. I think we've heard that loud and clear here tonight. It is vital to so many for so many different reasons, whether it be special needs or sports or whatever. Um, and so the functionality of the school has to continue. Unlike others, I don't see this as abrupt. I've seen it coming. I've avoided, I mean, I've served on so many boards and committees locally, statewide, and I avoided the APC for, because of the drama. Um, I don't see this as abrupt. I see it as it's been a long time coming. I do understand a lot of the fears mentioned tonight. And having worked at ASD and advocated with so many families there, I, I believe that ASD has not always had the best track record of following through or keeping their word or whatever. Just however it looks, it, it feels that way to a lot of people. And I think that that really has to be taken, um, into consideration as whatever moves forward happens. The APC is the most dysfunctional governing board I have ever encountered in my life. Um, they were passing things in the last meeting with one or two votes because of all the people that were accused or being investigated and couldn't vote or just absent and unfilled positions. Um, we need this to continue and, um, the people that rely on this school need assurances that their voice will be heard no matter what happens. This could be an opportunity changing how this school works, maybe even to, to better how we do things with special ed or Indian ed or migrant ed. Uh, but I would like the board to ensure that if they pass this tonight, which I believe should happen, to include some language that explicitly and intentionally outlines a process or demands a process and timeline for how you'll move forward and how parent and staff voices will be included. So many staff.
Thank you very much. Your time's up. Uh, let's invite Jennifer Robertson and Nikki Rose. Welcome. State your name for the record and you will each have three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Robertson. Thank you for letting me speak. First, I'd like to say thank you, Member Donnelly, for, um, putting up the idea of having some more time for this. I appreciate that. I'm here today because I have two children that have been homeschooled because they are, um, both of them have had educational challenges. We've tried many different approaches and, um, this one really works for us. And I'm really confused as to how anybody can think that a correspondence school is simply interchangeable with a charter school. I, I don't understand it, probably because we've tried it and it hasn't worked for us. But I, I don't see that it's a one-on-one exchange, to be honest. I also don't understand why, um, there seems to be a disagreement between the principal and their board and then their board and your board. And I'm confused as to how that can't be handled on an adult level. And an adult level would mean that you guys are working together without the kids being involved. It's, we're not even at the end of the school year yet and everybody's admitted that a transition is going to be disruptive and hard on everybody. And these kids are trying to finish up their, their semester, their years. Seniors are finishing their entire education. And why can't it be this summer for things to change? Why do we have to get rid of the charter? Why can't we simply just take other people's suggestion, which is to put other, um, bring in new, um, board members? I guess for me, when it comes right down to it, there feels like there's more questions than answers. And I know that's partly because you guys have more information than I do. And I appreciate that, but I just really feel like our kids should be taken into consideration and it feels a little bit like this is the easy way out. We'll just pull the charter and do something new and call it good. It's not a one-to-one solution. And this is an issue that is so important that it deserves more time and more hard work on everybody's part to make sure that it gets done right for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rose.
Yes, Nikki Rose. Thank you all for being here this evening. I thank you for allowing me to bring in some students from Family Partnership earlier this evening to see you in action, to see you all sitting before us making this very important decision tonight. My family and I are great supporters of APC board and we would like to see about, um, the possibility of extending the time that's required to discuss the proposal from Dr. Bryant. We want more time and if you're willing to give us that more time, there's reasons and questions that we need to be answered. One of the biggest reasons that I support the charter is that our parents give direction and input. My son, it's to do incredible work at home, um, from all different types of curriculum. He loves math and he has chosen, um, through a variety of different options. We used to do Go Math because that's what he did at Bear Valley. And when I found out about different curriculum, I said, "Let's change it and let's try a new one." We currently use what's called Beast Academy. He is excelling. Those are the kind of decisions that I would like to see continued and would be allowed in a charter school option. I also, because of that freedom of curriculum, can choose vendors that I trust and vendors that can actually benefit my child. He was just this, uh, last month able to do an art class and he drew an incredible, or watercolor of an incredible picture of a tiger. The reason I mention this is because he struggles with his handwriting. And so to do a watercolor at that young age, he's able to grow in his own way and in his own time. Another reason, my third reason, for the ability to ultimately be flexible with truly individualized learning plans that suit my student. My son benefits when my sponsor teacher and I sit down at the beginning of each year and look over a path of, of, essentially coming up with a curriculum for him. It's like nobody else's, I've learned throughout time is I get to pick it with him. He actually has input in that process. My husband and I also love that the funding goes to our students. We get to spend a lot of great things on his education. My mom was a teacher at ASD for almost 30 years and she looked at the incredible curriculum that I was able to purchase and she said, "If only I had just a small fraction of what you are able to purchase for your son in my classroom. I have manipulatives, I have, uh, hands-on activities. I have all kinds of learning creative ideas that he is interested in and engaged with." And every time that I recreate that curriculum with him, he encourages me and says, "Wow, Mom, this is working for me." Um, he was here this evening waving signs and I would just.
Thank you very much.
Listen to those children. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica Lehman and Christine Larson. Welcome. State your name for the record. You have, uh, three minutes. We'll start with Erica.
Good evening, Superintendent Bryant and Madam President Bellamy, members of the school board and community members. My name is Erica Lehman and I am honored to have the privilege to be here before you today and share my heart as a wife, a mom and a teacher. Now with homeschooling, my fourth of five children, who have all been Family Partnership Charter School musk ox since my oldest was in kindergarten. With all of the anticipation and excitement, the butterflies in my stomach feel reminiscent of my first day of teaching in this district more than 15 years ago when I stepped in front of my first band class. Ready? It was a dream come true and I loved it. Life has taken me in a different direction, yet I continue to raise up the next generation. As I sit here before you, I ask you to remember why you're here, why you ran for school board in the first place. What was your platform? Have you stayed true to that or has it altered to something different? I know that whatever it was that compelled you to this position, it has something to do with wanting to give your best effort to ensure that all children in Anchorage would get the best education possible. I know that you believed that by your overseeing this best education goal, that it would really happen. What an amazing place of honor for you to be seated here pursuing that end. You have an opportunity to give each Anchorage child the freedom and doorway to be able to receive an education that draws them forward into life and hope. Wow. I recognize that not every Anchorage child or family fits into your dreams as a school board of making life-giving education a top priority, which makes it extremely difficult and nearly impossible for all of your goals to be fulfilled. But I can absolutely assure you that some of the Anchorage children whom you care about and are here for are in fact receiving this kind of education and meeting your goals. Through Family Partnership as a charter school, many families are pursuing an education toward life and hope, your goals. And you have heard from many of them tonight. As people, we are designed to live in unity and peace and love. But when that doesn't happen, pebbles or rocks are thrown into the pool of life causing ripples and that can leave a lot of hurt. In recent years, there have been stones cast into the lake of unity at FPCS. But humbly, I ask that you humbly choose to keep Family Partnership a charter.
Thank you very much. Hey Christine, state your name for the record, please.
My name is Christine Larson and I am another Family Partnership family that's here to testify how great this school is and what it's done for our family. Family Partnership Charter School is the biggest and best performing school in all of Anchorage. It's crucial that it remains intact as a charter school to serve its families and students. I homeschool my four children with Family Partnership Charter School. Over the last four years, I've been nothing but pleased with the service and support I've received from my sponsor teacher and the school. My oldest daughter was drowning in public school and had extremely low self-confidence. After we started homeschooling and she realized that she could go at her own pace and she could pick the things that helped her learn, she was finally understanding the concepts and her whole perspective on school changed. I'm able to choose the curriculum which suits each of my children best, which is so important. And over the years, we've done a mix of bookwork and online classes and we've taken vendor classes. The allotment that we get allows my kids to participate in all these activities and on sports teams that they wouldn't otherwise get the chance to join. My sponsor teacher at Family Partnership has spent countless hours with me to help me map out an educational plan for each of my kids. She's patiently explained the options and opportunities that abound with homeschooling. As a certified teacher, I never imagined myself homeschooling. However, I quickly realized how amazing it was to be able to spend extra time together as a family, how incredible it was to be able to customize an education for each of my child's needs and how lucky we were to have a large allotment to help us pay for educational materials and expenses. Family Partnership has changed our family's life and the life of countless others. Family Partnership has changed our family's life and the life of countless others. In order for all of these services and opportunities to remain in place, Family Partnership must operate as a charter school. Don't revoke the charter of the biggest and highest performing school in Anchorage and disrupt all the families and most importantly, the students who depend on their services. Show these kids and all these families and parents who have testified today that you're listening and that you care and that you're ready to do what matters the most. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to invite Jack Bullen Schupf and Joshua Schupf. Are they on the phone? No? Okay. Let's try Jennifer Wages and Lail Anderson. We'll start with Jennifer. Uh, state your name for the record.
My name is Jennifer Wages and I thank you all for being here. I came last week and I told you, um, about my son's story, my personal story. Um, they've had a little bit of time to, uh, read through some things, check into more of the board meetings and do some investigation. It's pretty clear that there's a division within Family Partnership. And I think if you choose a correspondence school, you're picking a side. This division and you're saying that everybody, every family and every student doesn't have a place in ASD. This charter school is special. It requires special care. Those who want a correspondence school, let them have it. Both sides of this can win. There can be a correspondence school and a charter school. This charter school has existed for 25 years. There's what, 20 people maybe total that are involved? And I mean, that's an exaggeration in this in-board fighting, like including people that are maybe helping them. It's not that many. You have how many students and how many families that you're going to destroy? Because 20 people can't get along? Because the administration and some of the board members are, are divided in the direction of the school? Why would you take away this charter over the division for 20 people? This is like, you've heard how it's going to hurt these seniors that have scholarships. You wrote this letter saying, you know, the APC is harming children, but you failed to give an example of how they are harming children. There's not one example of a child who is harmed. And here tonight, you have heard examples of how harm is coming to their education by changing abruptly a charter school to a correspondence school. There is clear evidence of harm and you, by voting yes on this, would allow that harm to happen. You have, you have people who have come up here and testified. I saw this, this was not my planned testimony tonight, but I watched people who were on this board sit there and say, it now needs to be a correspondence school because this board can't get along. They were part of the problem. They are part of the problem. Like literally, you have two groups that cannot figure out how to work together for the good of our school. And then they're like, you have one group that's like, okay, well, let's just throw the baby out. Let's cut the baby. Let's just like, that baby's dead now. We're gonna make a new baby because we didn't like it. Like that's, that's, that to me seems like, that just seems crazy. You see how, you see these children here who are excelling and doing amazing. You see these parents in this community that hasn't had an opportunity to really come together. The charter school community is so much bigger than just the couple of people on there. Like, please do not harm these seniors who have worked so hard by stripping their charter and giving them correspondence. Please find another way. There are 500 students waiting to be in Family Partnership Charter School. There's not enough room. You need the charter school and the correspondence school. Please take more time.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson, state your name for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Lail Anderson. I am a parent with Family Partnership Charter School. Um, it is easier to tear down than to build up. Family Partnership has been serving ASD families for 25 years with an excellent track record. Please do not tear down what has been so carefully built over all these years. There are many strong educational opportunities in ASD and Family Partnership Charter School offers a unique and important choice for Anchorage families. Growing pains are inevitable in any organization that faces an unprecedented increase in numbers as Family Partnership has over the last three years. During this time, our students have continued to thrive thanks to the unique structure of our school outlined and held in place with the FPCS charter and upheld by the APC. There has been an APC for 25 years. I myself served on the APC 15 years ago. Um, and I know firsthand that the APC can and does often work very well. The problems that we have seen, um, and that we are talking about tonight have been within the last two to three years. The strong negative comments that have been spoken tonight have been made by people who have served on the APC during these last two years. Their forceful words of condemnation apply to the APC board that they have been a part of. That needs to be noted. A change, to change our charter school to a correspondence school removes, removes the unique parent and student rights that are protected by our charter. Please, school board members, do the right thing for our students, parents and teachers and keep our charter in place, allowing us to work through any existing issues and emerge stronger and better able to continue to serve the families in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'd like to call Amber Willard and Eric Huffman. Mr. Huffman? Let's try Adina Camelos. Whenever you're ready.
Thank you. My name is Amber Willard and I cannot speak as eloquently as those voices that you have already heard, but I must add my voice for the sake of my children. I, um, I grew up a homeschool student here in Anchorage and it was the best possible option for me. I have, through my homeschool education, acquired an undying love for learning. This love was given to me by, by my mother, who was my teacher. And, um, and, and the reason that my mother was able to pass this on to me was because of the support that she received through charter schools. I, um, was able to take the lessons I learned from my education to college and, um, there I thrived and I continued and I would have stayed forever if I could have because I love to learn. I'm at the library all the time. I cannot stop. I want to share this with my children. I have a two-year-old and a one-year-old who I left tonight so that I could speak to you. I, I believe that the, um, the Acupuncturist Policy Committee, uh, can work. I believe that it has greatly helped Family Partnership Charter School through many years. I believe that it can work again if you give it another chance. And I ask you to please give it another chance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Camelos?
Hello, my name is Adina Camelos. I'm not going to spend my three minutes trying to convince you of the value of Family Partnership. You've heard many testify to that already. I won't go on about the ways my children have flourished while students of Family Partnership. That isn't what any of this is about. One needs only to drop the words charter school around many ASD teachers and staff to get a clear picture of the anti-charter school sentiment that permeates the school district. This is a convenient excuse and a gross overreaction. I will not attempt to defend the APC's actions, but to pull the charter of a school that's been a successful part of educating thousands of Anchorage children over the past 25 years is unconscionable. Parent and student input is what makes Family Partnership successful. To remove the APC is to fundamentally change the school. It's wrong and I for one will not stand for it. You will never get my children in your classrooms. If you do this, I will pull my children from the Anchorage School District entirely. I know that I am not alone. Almost 1,200 parents have committed to do the same. We will have the ultimate say in our children's education. You are a convenience, not a necessity.
Thank you very much. Uh, Yurisha Hardy and Jessica Reed?
Hi, my name is Yurisha Hardy and I have three kids in Family Partnership Charter School. Um, I've listened to a lot of the testimonies tonight and I guess in the end, what I'm just really confused about is, you know, you have students over here that have come and told you they're not being affected, have not been affected by the infighting that's going on between the board members and APC. You have parents saying how wonderful Family Partnership has been for them and their children in furthering their education. You have statistics that have been brought forward showing that Family Partnership has outperformed every other ASD school. And I, I guess I just don't understand what more has to be said to show that there's definitely two different sides to the story and the majority of the story is that this is a successful school that is doing what the board has said their job is supposed to be, right? The job of the board is to ensure the successful production of students from ASD. And you have a school, the largest school in ASD, doing what you are supposed to be helping us do. We're accomplishing it. And yet you're saying, no, not good enough because of what was it, the 20 people? And we said that might even be not the right number, might be less than that, that are having problems. And we have sponsor teachers that have come up here and given us other solutions and saying, you know what? If you need to get rid of the people who are in the APC right now and start over and do it right this time, then let's do that. You have other options and taking away the whole charter for the school seems like an overreaction. My daughter came and spoke on the meeting on March 20th and she sat here and advocated for Family Partnership and told you guys that she went back to a high school within the neighborhood and was so phenomenally disappointed. She was like, I'm out and decided to come back to Family Partnership because of her great experience there and with our sponsor teacher who has single-handedly enforced the path for her to get into college and to succeed. And no one is getting any credit for the awesome job that Family Partnership has done for 25 years, outperforming everyone. My daughter came and gave testimony and then sat down and listened to other people. And I thought, oh, how great that she's learning how democracy works. But instead she turned to me and say, I don't understand what's going on. We already lost before we even started speaking. So now all we've produced is another jaded teenager. I hope that that's not the result and that you prove her wrong by listening to the parents that are here and the teachers that are advocating for the best school in the district.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Reed?
My name is Jessica Reed. I'm a mother of seven kids from baby to age 16. I teach them to stand up for what you believe in and try to lead by example. My fifth and eighth grade students shared their thoughts earlier. It's because of them that I am stepping out of my comfort zone and to lobby for a program that I believe in. If I had more time, I could share with you how Family Partnership has helped all five of my school-aged kids succeed. From my highly gifted child who was bored to my child with dyslexia, who although she was getting A's, was not thriving, to my average kids. Even the one who competes in sports. You've heard all different stories about how Family Partnership has helped, helped all different kinds of kids. Um, and I ask that you don't interpret our emotions, our passion for ignorance. We aren't misunderstanding what you're trying to do. We know exactly what you've outlined. In fact, I've spent the last one, two weeks watching all this, this, the, um, APC board meetings, trying to see what you saw. I've been trying to see from your perspective why this was the best outcome. Um, and I, I want to, I want to note, I think it's interesting that the only people who have petitioned to shut the APC board down, to change the Family Partnership school, are those that I saw were the main antagonizers in those meetings. It's easy to shut it down if you want it shut down. Just, just wanted to make that clarified. Um, why do we want to keep the APC port, APC board? Um, since I took so many hours trying to understand your side, I thought it was important that you understand my side as a homeschooling parent. The APC board, our fellow homeschooling parents, they have been in the trenches with us. I can come to them with a question and if they don't have the answer from their own experience, they can help me find the answer. Do you want me to text you at 11 o'clock at night, asking specific questions that you'll never have the answer to? Because our APC board is okay with us doing that because they're fellow parents who are also trying to teach their kids. It's not that we don't agree with how you're going to lead our school. It's that you simply do not have all the information that you need to successfully lead our school. Um, I think there's more questions that will arise that you simply haven't, um, had the time to investigate. What's going to happen with our seniors or our juniors or our sophomores? My kids that I'm doing year-round school with, what's going to happen in the summer when they don't get credit for those classes because it's against your rules?
Thank you very much. I'd like to invite Mr. David Van Kaya. Welcome. Please state your name for the record and you have three minutes.
Oh, Pierzolo, David Van Kaya. Um, many have eloquently spoken about how Family Partnership has supported their children. And many have spoken eloquently as well about how sponsor teachers and their office staff have supported the parents. I just want to point out a different maybe perspective or consideration. I think it's been talked about the numbers. I think Family Partnership has roughly 1,800 plus students with, I guess I just heard tonight, 500 waiting to get into it. Um, ASD's correspondence school that you guys are so proud of, AKPDIA, has 204 students. So I'm knowing a little bit about economics. I'm guessing, I'm pretty confident that Family Partnership is cash positive. And I'm probably also guessing by knowing a little bit about economics that AKPDIA or PDEA is probably not, just like the other schools that you have in the district potentially. So I just want you to consider that also as another perspective is you have a large school that's teaching the students, that's supporting the parents, that's making, is not a burden as far as financially on ASD and you have a large amount of people. Whereas you already have a correspondence school, you've already tested that, those waters. And how, how well are those waters working? I mean, we have more going, trying to go into Family Partnership Charter School than there is at all at PDEA, which is ASD's other correspondence school. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much, sir. That ends our testimony before, um, we deliberate. The motion before us is to approve ASD memorandum number 129. What is the will of the body? Uh, Dr. Bryant, did you have any comments?
I spoke to this at the previous board meeting, but at a high level, I do want to address some of the um, testimony and questions that have been brought up specifically around the difference between a correspondence school and a charter school. I did just want to clarify that per deed regulation for AAC 9.99083, um, a correspondence study program actually is the umbrella term used to describe a charter correspondence program and a district governed correspondence program. So many of the limitations that have been cited, um, would not apply to Family Partnership and it would operate, um, very logistically similarly to how it is today. Uh, this proposal is, um, the result of a request from the school board to investigate the effectiveness of the APC to govern the school. And based on those findings, I do recommend a shift in governance from the APC structure to a district governed a school.
Thank you very much. Questions from the board? Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I would, um, like to move an amendment. So I want to make sure Ms. Foster has it before.
Can you speak a little louder?
Absolutely, yeah. So I'm gonna move my amendments and I'll read it into the record here. Uh, Ms. Foster has, has it, uh, to place on Ms. Foster has it to place on the screen. I move to add the following language underneath the recommendation, which states, should this memorandum be adopted, the following commitments will be made to the FPCS community pending any further action by the ASD school board. One, all FPCS funds will remain in an account to be used for only FPCS expenses. ASD will not utilize any savings for FPCS for unrelated expenses. Two, ASD administration will partner with the parents and staff at FPCS to maximize parental involvement in curriculum and budget decisions, to include the creation of a parent-led academic advisory council to facilitate input and decision-making processes. Current parental freedom of choice regarding curriculum will remain intact. And three, there will be no changes to student allotments, including the yearly rollover of any unused allotment funds. If I get a second, I would gladly speak to the amendment.
Second. Okay, moved in second to amend memorandum number 129 as indicated. We will put that motion, we will put that up. You may speak to the motion.
Thank you, Madam President. So the motion to amend incorporates, I believe, we've tried to work in concert with what Dr. Bryant and his team have articulated are their commitments, which in turn should be in this memorandum. It's one of the, I think, the shortcomings of the document, which has unfortunately caused confusion, I think even we've heard tonight regarding how opportunities will change for students and families. And so I think this amendment makes whole the entire plan that's been proposed by district administration. And as someone who has benefited from Family Partnership, the choice involved multiple students attending the school over the last 10 years, I think this is important to capture the full scope of the transition plan should the board go to adopt the memorandum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments on the amendment?
Yes.
Oh, Member Higgins, yes.
It's so pleasant to just ignore me. I understand, it's okay. Let me, let me just say, in regards to it, the idea that somehow or another, the budget reserves of Anchorage Partnership is somehow different than the, than an ASD school. And if we, right now, we may not have the difficulty with funding the caps, but there are caps on things. And to my knowledge, no, no individual school is the Anchorage School District that's required to comply with that cap. Now, I agree with the idea of using the funds within the school. I don't support, my concern is that this is inconsistent to separate out any particular one fund from the obligations of the school district as a whole. We vote on the budget to move it forward, that's one thing. And I absolutely want the things to continue on positively with, with the, with the school, with the charter school. But I don't see how we can separate that out. Maybe that might be addressed by finance, but it seems to me it isn't part of the entire maximum that we're allowed to carry on in reserves.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Dr. Bryant?
Sure, I would be happy to speak to that. I do agree that while it's unconventional to earmark dollars for a specific school aside, so for example, there's not a specific East High School account that just goes to East High School, there's a district-wide way to allocate funds. I do think that this amendment is appropriate just to hold true to the commitment that I made to the Family Partnership community a couple of weeks ago, that this is not about the funding of Family Partnership, this is about disturbing trends in governance of the APC over multiple years, including 2023. So for that reason, I am supportive of keeping those funds for use exclusively for Family Partnership. And I also want to point out that it's a state statute to also ensure that those allotments are allocated to the student until they graduate or are no longer in Family Partnership.
Thank you. Member Holloman?
I much appreciate the comments of the superintendent. It is a case that this amendment's a complication that is unusual and unique for different schools. But I think it's in order because it does express the understanding of the board going further. Absolutely, our intention is not to in any way close or limit Family Partnership. The issues have been strictly with the Academic Policy Committee. We like the way the charter school functions. It is a correspondence charter school now, under state law, and correspondence is just a designation. There's no intention from me, and I don't think anyone else in the board, that the kind of school it's going to be is going to shift. You'll still have the same teachers that you worked with, still be working with the same allocation, still have the same freedoms. The state law does not stipulate the curriculum has to be the same as neighborhood schools, but that it can't be of a lesser quality. We certainly hope it's not of a lesser quality now. So, so all the things in this amendment would codify things that we think we are moving ahead with right now. And I'll speak a little more when we're back on the main question. You have to have a functioning academic policy committee to be a charter school and you don't. And we're not able to step in and fix that. We can't fire members of the academic policy committee, we can't select new ones, we can't tell them what to do. All those things would violate the agreement as it exists. Unfortunately, we have very few tools and, and we're making use unfortunately of the, of one of the only ones we have. But I do think this amendment expresses very well what we think is going to happen. The students are going to continue to see the same people, work on the same topics, graduate with the same degree. And I do understand that going down the road, the lack of parents with direct control does affect the outcome. And that's going to be something we're going to have to work at to make sure that we still get the same benefit to our families that they've had. For the record, I'm a member also, my son was in Family Partnership some years ago and it was a program that worked out perfectly for what we needed at the time, in the same way that so many students have said. So I do support this amendment. I'll be voting for it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, Madam President, I would like to-
Would you like to speak to your motion?
Absolutely, yep, thank you. Appreciate the comments that have been made. I just wanted to add the, the language of this was intentional in that it recognizes that this board can't bind a future board. And in the same way that a board in two weeks could terminate, could explore the termination of a charter that this board has approved or create a charter. It's recognizing that authority and that there are limitations. The other thing that I hope is inherent is that all ASD schools must operate within the scope of the law. And so I didn't add this language in here, but regarding any, any manner of operation, curriculum, operating of the governance or otherwise, all schools will continue to have to operate in the law, that's going to be important. And those are limitations that the district is bound by whether or not they're in this memorandum or whether or not they're in this amendment to the memorandum. I would urge a yes vote, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yep.
Member Higgins?
Yeah, with the additional information from the superintendent, I, I'm supportive of this completely. I think the idea of continuing on and living up to that commitment is there from, from everyone. And so I, my reservation had to do only with the compliance kind of issue and now I feel comfortable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Saying no other, we'll vote on the amendment. We'll do a voice vote.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
So that amendment passes 7-0. So that brings us back to the main motion.
Madam President?
Yes.
Thank you.
Member Donley?
I think the amendment made the main motion better, but there have been multiple potential courses of action identified to address the administration's identified concerns with Family Partnership. And of all those options that have been identified, the memorandum before us is still the most extreme and that's the, the doing away with it as a charter school. I had hoped the parents of Family Partnership would have additional time to bring a less extreme proposal developed by themselves to the administration and this board. And I continue to hope to give them that additional time to do so and offer a less extreme pass forward. And also offer some guidance to the administration for one of the less extreme options that are available to us. So I would move to table memorandum 129 to our next action agenda, next meeting's action agenda, with the recommendation that the memo be modified to enact an ASD board policy or administrative regulation, if possible, directed at the composition of the charter school's APC. The policy would prohibit any relatives from serving on the APC together and prohibit student members from being voting members of the APC and any relative or principal, teacher or staff from serving on the APC.
So if I'm, could you restate your motion, please? I mean, you gave a lot of information there, but what is the main motion?
The main motion is to table to the next action agenda with the recommendation to the superintendent that the ASD modify the, the proposed amendment to enact ASD board policy or if, if more appropriate, administrative regulation directed at the composition of the charter school APC. The policy would prohibit any relatives from serving on the APC together, would prohibit student members from being voting members of the APC and any relative principal, relative of the principal, teacher or staff from serving on the APC.
What's your point of order?
Can we put all that in the motion to table?
I'm just getting to that.
Yeah.
I think the main motion is to table, all the other would come, we'd need to do something with it, but after the main, your main motion passes.
I think it's a compound motion. I don't see why it's not allowed. If people want to vote on them separately, I would suggest that the second half would come first before the motion to table.
So what, what motion are you putting forward to get a second?
Well, are you ruling the motion out of order?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
I'm just asking you to state it.
I'm moving-
Amanda's trying to capture what you're saying. Do you have it written out? Thank you.
It's the yellow text there.
Okay. So the motion is to table?
With a recommendation that an alternative course of action be taken that would, as identified in the text there that I've given to the secretary, that would do the three things identified there.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do you have it, Amanda? She needs a minute to get it typed in. And I need to remind the room of decorum, please. 418 meeting with the recommendation to enact ASD board policy or administrative regulation directed at the comp, composition of charter schools APC. The policy should prohibit, A, any relatives from serving on the APC together, B, student members from being voting members of the APC, and C, any relative or principal, teacher or staff from serving on the APC. And that was moved by Member Donley, second by Member Holloman. Member Donley, do you want to speak to your motion?
Thank you, Madam President. I just think this is a logical next step to consider before going the full way to repealing this charter school, repealing the charter for Family Partnership. We have such a successful school here, we have such amazing parental participation in this school. I hate to lose that ethos that's out there among the parents simply because of a dysfunctional APC. I think these guidelines, we clearly have the authority as a board to adopt these guidelines. They would seem appropriate all the way across the board to apply to other charter schools too and would be a really good step towards, I think, a logical step towards addressing the concerns that have been raised without doing away with the charter for this school. Thank you.
Member Holloman?
There, there are a lot of things that we've heard tonight that I do think are misperceptions. And trying to have a conversation in a meeting this large on things like that is extremely difficult. I think that what I still think is structurally an unsound motion by Member Donley expresses some of the concerns of the board very well. There's also the case that the charter can't be revoked for 30 days, which means that if we take action tonight, it would be the very early part of May before it was revoked. This will push a decision off by at least a couple of weeks, open up the potential for a resolution, which means the, we could push the change in the charter if that's what happens off by a couple of weeks. To some degree, I think perhaps getting through the school year would matter to a lot of people with things intact. I see that as a benefit. I do have to say that, that having a legally functioning APC is critical and, and I am uncomfortable extending the time, but this has been going on as a discussion and back and forth for months. This is not something that happens suddenly. I'm not sure it can be resolved in just a couple of weeks, but if it could, that would be rather marvelous. So while I, I do support the administration and the steps that they've taken, I also am going to support it two weeks away with the idea that that gives parents a chance to turn their focus to the APC. I'm still working on the assumption that most parents don't interact with the APC much, aren't really aware of what happens with it, don't wish to be affected by any shortcomings or disagreements or arguments that happen in it. That's the case for us as well. But time is very limited and the issues are extreme. But I do support this two weeks away. Thank you.
Any other comments? Before we vote on the motion? Member Wilson?
Question, and ideally, Dr. Bryant can speak to that, to the potential to change board policy. board policy.
Sure. This is something that, that's been explored and briefed to the board during our legal discussions, and it is within the board's purview to pass a policy that would apply equally to all APCs. I think a trade-off that the board should consider is that this would impact schools other than family partnership, certainly not to the degree that this amendment would affect family partnership, but it would. It would also trigger an interesting governance challenge for the APC to restore its own ranks through potentially special elections or appointments. There are a lot of moving pieces that could, um, result in additional governance challenges. I think the last thing I'll say as the board weighs this, um, potential amendment versus the original recommendation is, uh, some of these governance challenges even go beyond the, uh, composition of the APC. I'll use an example that actually happened three days after, uh, the APC was notified that we would be considering a termination of the charter school. Uh, so for those of you in the public, um, who may not be aware of what is the role of an APC, the role of an academic policy committee is to govern a school. So essentially their role is to, uh, pass academic policies that relate to their school and to supervise and hire or terminate a principal. I will say that something, um, very unsettling that I witnessed, um, Monday night, actually during this board meeting, some of you may have not seen it because you were here with me, um, but I think it is important that the public is aware of a meeting that happened of the APC, the day of our board meeting, where they were tasked with their primary role in governing, which is to supervise and evaluate the principal. I will go ahead and get to the punchline. Only one person was eligible to vote at the end of that discussion. And the reason why only one person was eligible to vote, um, was because one member of the APC, uh, resigned in the middle of the meeting, uh, due to an accusation of breach of confidentiality, uh, due to testimony that took place here at this board meeting. Uh, one isn't eligible to vote on the principal's evaluation due to a conflict of interest, uh, that's been, uh, discussed earlier today. Two were under investigation by other APC members, which left them ineligible to vote. That's still something that could happen under the current family partnership bylaws, even with this amendment. And the rest of the, uh, reasons why, uh, people couldn't vote is because they are children or they, uh, work directly for the principal as staff members, which would be addressed by this amendment. The one person who was eligible to vote again on the, I would say, the primary responsibility of an APC has since resigned, uh, which should be the changeover of third chair, I believe, in the past two years. And, um, you know, we're getting towards half a dozen APC member turnover over the last two years. So not all of those issues will necessarily be remedied, uh, by this. I, I would say that while this is, uh, a worthy amendment worth considering, I think it's also important to consider that this would remove staff and student input from the role of governance of the school. Uh, there may be members of the community that would prefer them to have a role at the governance table. I want to respect their opinions on that. Um, and then I also want to say that all of the stakeholders would have a seat at the table if we move towards a district governance that uses an academic advisory council versus an academic policy committee. Uh, so at this point, the board just needs to weigh the route that it wants to do it. And I think these are two valid ways to do it, but I did feel, um, compelled to share with you what I perceive to be the trade-offs of vote.
Thank you very much. Uh, member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Just to, I mean, a clarification question and follow-up for Dr. Bryant. Based on the situation described, I guess in general, do you see increased financial risk and liability concerns for the district should the board not make a decision this evening?
I will say that the issues with the governance of family partnership predate my time. In fact, they may predate multiple superintendents and many, many board members. It goes back to, um, as far as I recall, back to 2018, um, when an APC voted to bypass principal to purchase curriculum that turned out to be religious in nature, which is a violation of state and federal law. Um, in May 2021, there was a violation of administrative regulation 6181, um, because staff members who served on the APC were partaking knowingly in the evaluation of the principal. That same administrative regulation 6581 was violated again in May of 2021. That resulted in the conversation in December of 2021 for ASD to recommend a five-year charter instead of a 10, um, due to a number of different allegations that this actual board, um, had the opportunity to vet and discuss. So I don't need to, to recap how that ended. But I will say that after the renewal of the charter, and these are just a factual series of events, um, there have been continued, uh, incidents of infighting amongst APC members. You know, of course, that's a violation of section 11.3 of their bylaws, but more importantly, it's caused families and students to be concerned. We receive emails from all of these stakeholders on both sides of the issue, and it's the result of APC infighting that's trickling down to the students, in my opinion. I've already mentioned that the role of the APC is to govern the school. There have been violations of Alaska statute 1414130C as it relates to delegating the role of operations to the school principal. I mentioned the concern about governance as it relates to the principal evaluation. I will say in October 2022, after the board reviewed, uh, the, the renewal request for family partnership charter school, um, the, a very interesting situation happened, and I, I bring this up only because, uh, I know multiple, um, committee members have, um, very thoughtfully proposed that we engage the APC in additional training and support. We did support, uh, family partnership to receive training from the Alaska Association of School Boards, and they would be the most appropriate, uh, organization to train an APC on governance. Unfortunately, an unprecedented move, ASB withdrew services from family partnership, and I'll just quote what they said on the record, which is, they, uh, cited high levels of acrimony and deep division amongst board members, and services are not being used constructively. And I'll also say that while coaching the academic policy committee, uh, it was also stated on the record by ASB that no other APC in the state has gotten into the operations of the school at this level. So the question that the board has to consider is, will the series of multi-year, um, specific incidents of dysfunction change when members of the APC change? Uh, we received written testimony this evening from former director of charter schools, who used to be an employee of the district, who cited potentially, uh, dysfunction that even predates 2018. So while the past doesn't necessarily predict the future, I have noticed an ongoing series of situations that are alarming. And given that this dysfunction that happened with the evaluation of the principal literally less than two weeks ago happened, um, after the APC was notified of intent, uh, to remove the charter, I am concerned that situations will continue to happen under this governance structure. That's not my decision to make, but I did feel compelled to share that with the board because ultimately it's your decision.
Did you have a follow-up? Member Jacobs?
Yeah, I, I don't have a follow-up. I guess I would move to divide the question, um, and, um, and separate the motion to table with the motion to, um, review for policy. Um, and if there's a second, I can speak to that.
One second.
Thank you, Madam President, with your permission. So, um, I think that these are two, I think it's a bit confusing and causing confusion, because I'm not entirely sure if we're passing a policy, um, or if we're committing to pass a policy by passing the motion, by considering a, um, a motion to table. I think those are two very different questions and motions that should be, um, have separate discussion. So I would, um, I'm not even sure that it's clear if we're, um, intending to allow certain individuals to participate in the governance structure. I think this should be handled in committee. So, um, if we're going to divide the question, if that's approved, my intention is to, um, to work through the motion to table now. We can discuss and vote. And then regardless, I think this is something that, uh, we should discuss in our existing committee structure, um, that we should consider, um, all charter schools in, because as has been pointed out, um, anything we, we, um, put in place for one charter school would apply to all, and that's important to consider. So, um, would ask and urge a yes vote to divide the question and deal with these separately.
The amendment to the amendment is to divide the question?
I don't think it's technically an amendment. I think it's just a motion to divide.
It's just a motion to divide. All right. Did, did we get a second? Oh, yeah, door. Okay, yes.
Normally, the first thing, uh, on the question of division, the chair rules whether it's a divisible motion or not, which I would agree this is divisible, but the chair would make that ruling and then we would debate it.
Yes, and I, that's what I tried to get you to do in the beginning, member Donnelly. Just to divide it so that it would, wouldn't be so cumbersome, but I would allow it.
To combine them, but it's the will of the body, whether to divide it or not.
Understood.
Yeah. As far as the issue raised about what, what this would direct of the administration, it's just like the development of the memorandum that's before us. It'd be the development of another option, though, because there would be no commitment for the board to vote for this develop, this developed memorandum. It would, but we would have it in written form before us, um, that would be, you know, come before us for a separate consideration at that time. So it doesn't commit the board to vote for this when the new memorandum, new drafted memorandum comes before us. That would be up for debate, and amendment again is the main motion. But I would like to see as far as the order that this plays, takes place, that the, the, the first, uh, that the, the second part of my main motion would be considered first and then move on to the table and.
So can you read the second part? The policy should prohibit, is that the part?
Yeah, the, the, um, the, the, the board would, the, the, the administration would develop a, a new memorandum to enact ASD board policy or administrative regulation, whichever they recommended, directed at the composition of charter schools APCs. The policy would permit any relatives from serving on the APC together, um, would, um, prohibit student members from being voting members of the APC and any relatives of the principal, teacher, or staff from serving on the APC, which addresses many of the concerns that have been raised.
Okay, we, we've got to catch Amanda. Okay, so I think what, where we are is I've approved the, I'll allow the division, the separate, what do you call it? The separation?
It's a division of the question.
There's a division of the questions. Uh, two, so the first part of the question is to table the memo until the eight, 418 meeting.
Well, I, I would, I would request that the second part be voted on because it's a substantive motion and that would, and then proceed to the motion to table.
So is that a point of order, Madam President? Um, I believe we need to, we need to first decide if we're going to approve the motion to divide the question, and so I think we should narrow our focus there. After, should the board approve it, you would, as chair, decide how to split that motion with Ms. Foster and then decide which goes first. But we're putting the cart before the horse here, so just.
Exactly. Good point. Point well taken.
It just hasn't varying on how I would vote on the division.
So the motion, the, the amendment before us now is to divide the question. Any other comments or questions on that? It's been moved by member Donnelly, I mean, uh, Mr., uh, member Jacobs, second by, I think it was member Wilson? All right. Yes, member Holloman.
You just said the, the motion is to divide the question?
Yes.
Okay. Just clarifying.
We're trying to take them one at a time. All right, you ready? Yes, this is what we're voting on, whether to divide the question.
Member Higgins? Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Wilson? Yes. Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Donnelly?
No.
Member Higgins?
Yes. Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to one to divide the question. I'm sorry, six to one.
Point of order.
Yes.
Um, so the, the motion to table has priority. The, for lack of anywhere else for it to, to go, the, the other half of the motion is an amendment to the main motion, which sets recommendations to a motion to remove the charter, which is inconsistent. I mean, if, if it's a motion to remove the charter, but here's some ideas about how you don't remove the charter, um, that makes no sense to me. So, um, and the other part of it is, it does make sense to me, motion to table has priority. I think we have to consider that first, uh, and if it fails, then we would move on and possibly amend the main motion.
The motion to table.
Madam President?
Yes.
Um, so I, I think in terms of Roberts rules, I think that we could do one of two things, or a small board, so we could, uh, with, without objection, choose to, um, consider the motion that would normally come second first, if that's the will of, of the body. The other thing we could do is move to suspend the rules. Either way, I think that's fine, but member Holloman's point is reasonable in that, um, and I personally would support considering the, um, the second half of member Donnelly's motion first. So either way, I think is a path forward.
All right, so the, the, uh, motion to divide passes. So our next step now.
So I would.
Is to go on, member Donnelly.
I'm sorry, apologize.
That's all right. Go on.
I would move to proceed to take up the second question first, which is the language that I read, that we would be recommending that the administration or requesting the administration to modify the memorandum to enact, uh, to call for the enaction of ASD board policy or administrative regulation directed at the composition of charter school APCs. The policy would prohibit any relatives from serving on the APC together, student members from being voting members of the APC, and any relative of the principal, teacher, or staff from serving on the APC. I'll sign.
Hey, it's been moved in second to take up the second part of member Donnelly's, uh, original amendment first. And I will give Amanda a minute to put it up, so before we. So the second, what is that? This is the second amendment. So the second part. After the table, the recommendation. Separated, separated, exactly. Now, we can vote on it, but we need to vote on that one first. Okay, while Amanda is putting that up, is there, it's been moved, uh, moved in second. Member Donnelly, do you want to speak to your amendment?
Thank you, Madam President. As I said before, I just think this is a, a more reasonable next step in addressing the issues that we're confronted with here. And if, over the next two weeks, um, the board decides, you know, this isn't enough, we still have the proposal, you know, it's already developed to go the way that the superintendent's recommending it this time. So, um, we deal with it as a main motion. Next time, we can choose either direction or something else. So, but this would give some guidance to get this option developed over the next two weeks and also give the folks at family partnership a, a reasonable additional amount of time to help come forward with proposals on their own. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Jacobs?
I would move to refer this motion to committee, governance specifically.
Second. Moved in second to refer to, uh, governance committee.
Speak to my motion, follow up.
Speak to your motion.
Thank you, Madam President. So, um, I, I agree, this is worth considering. Um, I think this is best for, um, our governance committee as, um, the, the wording is, um, directed to enact board policy, um, which administration can't do and perform, um, according to our bylaws. So, uh, this needs to go to our governance committee. I think it's a, um, at least a partially an independent question, whether or not this is something that's good for all of our charter schools. And so, uh, would need to be done carefully, um, over the course of the next few months. Thank you.
Any other comments? Member Lessons?
I appreciate the motion to send it to governance. I think this is a very thoughtful path forward, but I think it deserves the time and attention that the normal governance policy affords. It would then, if something passed out of governance, enable other APC members at other. enable other APC members at other schools and their affiliated stakeholders to weigh in as with any other board policy. So it is thoughtful, but I don't think it's the place to put this language in this particular memorandum.
Thank you. Any other comments? Member Holloman?
Again, I think we suddenly have two different things going on. And one is changing board policy as it relates to our charters and structure of their governance, their APCs and all is one consideration. But in essence, it would also be asking the governance committee to kind of enter into a negotiation that they're not well suited to do. One thing I would want to stress is that the things that are stated in Member Donley's motion don't satisfy the conditions needed to sustain the charter. What's really required is for the superintendent to feel that he can go forward in a legal way, working through his administrative staff with an APC that's responsive to state law and to ASD policy and personnel issues and all those other things. These are sort of a couple of key steps, I think, that need to happen before that process can even begin. But it's important to understand that this is not an argument between the ASD board and the APC. It's really a point of contention between the superintendent and the APC to be able to work out. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with the idea that governance can enter into that. We can't speak on behalf of the administration and say, well, if you do this, you're fine. The issue with family partnership is something that stands on its own. Looking at how we got here and everything, they have a whole lot to do with how we want other APCs to govern themselves. And that, I think, would be a reasonable thing for governance to take up. But in the midst of considering this charter question, I am not sure sending it to the governance committee makes sense. But we'll talk about it if you send it there.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Madam President, yeah, if I could. So, Member Holloman, I would like to address the comments made by Member Holloman, because I agree. The, I think what you're grappling with is the fact that a motion to impact every charter school in ASD was made inside a motion to table a memorandum that applies to one campus. And so I think it was a poorly crafted motion that, in terms of pure governance, I mean, I wouldn't have seconded it, to be frank. I think there was better as two separate motions. So within Roberts' rules, I'm doing my best to pull the two apart into separate things that can be discussed and voted on separately. I think that these are, at least for the majority, separate issues that we should consider regardless as to the main motion and the underlying memorandum. This is a conversation that we should be having and involve all of our charter schools, and that will take months. I don't know that the memorandum can afford to wait that long, based on the comments of our superintendent. So I do view them as very separate things. Thank you.
Member, I mean, Dr. Bryant?
And if I could just clarify, while I do understand that Member Donley presented this amendment as a substitute for the memorandum, another alternative is for the board to potentially pursue both. They can pursue the voting on the recommendation, as is in the memorandum, as well as going to governance to review whether or not it makes sense to have all APCs adhere to the recommendation proposed by Member Donley. So they don't necessarily have to be separate. The board could choose to do both. Just to clarify.
Okay. Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to make the point that to address some of the specific concerns that have been raised, we couldn't just target one charter school. We needed to address it from a systemic point of view, is my understanding of what we've been advised. And so that's why it was couched in the way it was.
And, you know, my concern is, is that to to require all charter schools without having a deeper discussion, to have the superintendent work on a process that's going to impact all charter schools, when we're really trying to focus on family partnership? I just think to do that here is probably not advisable. So, which is why, you know, I'm glad we separated the amendment or the motion. So, but I would support moving, separating, or moving motion number five, she's going to type it in, to governance. So I'll be voting yes. Because I think a lot more thought needs to go into the impact of that systemically. I think it was moved by Member Jacobs, and seconded by, was it?
Yeah.
Member Lessons? Okay. You just want to get the wording correct? Uh, Member Donley, could you, I mean, I'm sorry. It's just to refer to governance. That's what I put in. All right, thank you. Any no other comments? The motion before you is to refer to governance.
Member Jacobs?
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Donley?
No.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
And that passes six to one. So now, we're back to. Well, we're on the, the table. That's where we are. Give her one minute to get it up. We have to track all these. I think that was, was that number four? I think that was moved by Member Donley, seconded by Member Holloman, I believe. Did you second the move to?
So, Madam President, now that the questions are divided, as Member Donley did with his, the second half of the motion, he could remake the first half, and then the second could do so.
All right. Yeah, do it again, because I'm not sure.
Well, I would, if you'd like me to.
Would you please?
Yeah. I move to table memorandum 129 to the action agenda of our next meeting.
I need a second. Now, one of y'all seconded before.
Second.
Thank you. All right, moved in second to table to our next meeting. Any discussion? Do you want to speak to it, Member Donley? I think you have, but you can have one more opportunity.
Quickly, I would just love to give the folks at Family Partnership Charter School the opportunity to develop a proposal to bring before the superintendent and the board of what they're willing to do to address the concerns the superintendent has articulated. And it was pretty short notice before our last meeting, and I think they've been struggling to come up with something. And I'd like to give them the opportunity to do that.
Any other, yeah, Member Lessons?
I'm going to oppose this. I've spent part of the preparation for this meeting, reading all of the minutes from the past two years of APC meetings. And I think that the root cause of this level of dysfunction is not going to be resolved within a two-week period.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Any other comments? Member Holloman?
I will have to incur with Member Lessons, that I'm not optimistic. I do hope that in the next couple of weeks, a lot more of the factual information can come out. I do think it's important for folks to realize that within our alternative programs, we have some schools that have a very differing curriculum, have very differing rules. And we've done that for years, and we can continue to do it. I do understand the concern that it might not work right, because every day, things don't work right. And fortunately, every day, quite a few things do work right as well. It's going to be critical that folks pay attention to their APC all the time, because this really is something that developed over a very long period of time. And I think most people have come in and used the program to the benefit of their kids, and that's worked great. But the back office side of it has to function as well. The APC can't step outside the boundaries of state law, personnel regulations, or other things. And it's going to take a functioning APC, but it's also going to take a wider group of parents that are just watching them and making sure they're functioning in a reasonable way all the time. We can't do it. We can't come in and fire certain people and say, they're not really performing. Your charter protects you from having us do something like that. So once again, we have very limited options. We can dissolve it, but we can't control it, and we shouldn't. It would not really be a charter school if we did. So I hope people look at all the issues, gather things together. I have a lot of concerns about putting it off for a couple of weeks, but there are a lot of people that have a huge concern about it. And here's a short amount of time to try to get it together and respond and point things in the right direction. I hope it happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Higgins, did you have your hand up?
I did. I just want to say that before even going into the point where we are right now, one of the things I wanted to do was provide an opportunity to respond. And the response was, before we reached that conclusion, and that response was provided. I don't know, I haven't heard anything here indicating anything is changing at this point. And there could be other factors to it, but it's for that reason I will not support it.
Thank you. Any other comments? The motion before you is to table to the next meeting. Ready for a vote?
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
No.
Member Lessons?
No.
Member Higgins?
No.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
No.
President Bellamy?
No.
So that motion fails. Five to two. We are back, I believe, to the main motion. Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. On the main motion, I have a question for Dr. Bryant. A couple testifiers tonight spoke to concern about the naming convention for the change that's being proposed in the memorandum. Could I ask for your thoughts on that? As well as, at this point with the memorandum, should it be adopted by the board? Would it help to have additional flexibility to address some of those concerns? Thank you.
Sure. If I understand the concerns correctly, that there's a concern around the term correspondence. I do want to make the community aware that correspondence is a statutory term used to describe a homeschooling program where the district serves as a sponsor. Family Partnership Charter School is a correspondence school, but it's a charter correspondence school. So the proposal is to shift it to a district governance structure as a district governed correspondence program. So they still fall under the same statute that defines what they call a correspondence program of study. So the term correspondence has no programmatic impact on the school. So to be very specific, it wouldn't have an impact on the ways in which we allow parents to work with their sponsored teacher and principals to select a curriculum, so long as it complies with state and federal regulations. It wouldn't impact the allotments. It wouldn't impact its ability to function as a year-round school. Correspondence is specifically the definition used to describe family partnership, as is, with the very exception of it being governed by an academic policy committee.
Go on. Follow up.
Yeah, follow up, thank you, Madam President. Would, should the memorandum pass? Would the administration be open to a resolution or discussion with the parental governing committee that's being formed, as referenced in the memorandum, that related to improvements to the name change through existing board policy?
Yes, we'd be open to that change, to the name of the school if there were community input that suggested that a better name than Family Partnership Correspondence School is available.
Member Lessons? Did you have your hand up? Okay. I'll come back to you.
I have one quick question, and then one much likely longer comment. The quick question I have is a follow-up. So how would that work for our graduating seniors? That was a point of, that was a question that surfaced in today's, the senior's testimony. There's about 93 when I glanced at the data dashboard.
Yeah, so we'll work closely with our legal team and staff to ensure that there's no disruption to the ability for a student to graduate. They're still enrolled in credit-bearing courses at their school. We're simply changing over the governance structure of the school in the middle of the year. I can even confirm, and I will aspire to ensure that the Diploma Save Family Partnership Charter School, because that was the understanding when those students enrolled, I can have that confirmed in the coming days. But it's my intent to allow school to end as normal under that name, even though we're going to change the governance structure effective early May, if this proposal is voted on.
And that, so the, oh, I'm sorry. You did have a follow-up.
Go on. I did. I appreciate that clarification. And I guess I would hope that that would extend to any future levels of support that are required for students in, say, the college admissions process, whatever. There are a lot of hoops to jump through. And so I hope, I would hope that that sort of, like, ability to hold on to that name maybe could follow this particular cohort of seniors through that process. Why don't you come back to me for my longer comment? I have a bearable question.
Yes, and just for the record, we want to be amenable to ensuring that we can maintain the name of the charter school, given that this is a change happening in the middle of the year. But I also want to say that as a former college counselor and national expert on the topic of college admissions, I do not anticipate a shift to correspondence versus charter to have any sort of negative impact on admission to colleges. And this is kind of someone who's supported thousands of students to go to 164 of the most selective colleges in the country. I am not concerned about that.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to Member Donley. And then I think, did I see your hand, Member Holloman? No, you're good? Okay. Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. That was the exact issue I was going to raise, hoping that these seniors could graduate with their school being what it's been called when they plan to graduate from that school.
Thank you. Member Wilson?
I'm going to ask Dr. Bryant to address this. It's, I have a list of questions, actually. I think everybody else has already answered or asked the questions. You've answered them, but there's one additional, and it's more of an overview of how, if at all, the day-to-day curriculum and academics will be, will it be the same? Will it be changed? Can you just address that, please?
Sure. So we expect that all curriculum, whether it's implemented in a district-operated school or a charter school, follows all state and federal regulations as it relates to curriculum and how it's paid for. I do want to be clear that ASD does have a portfolio of alternative schools that are able to implement alternative ways of the curriculum. For example, think about our ABC programs, just as one example. There is precedent within ASD to allow those flexibilities for families to be engaged in the selection of a curriculum through partnering with their sponsored teacher and their principal. Really, the only statutory regulation is the fact that a parent does need to work with a certificated staff member to ensure that the curriculum fulfills the basic academic programming and doesn't violate any sort of regulation. But all of that to say. But all of that to say, in terms of the day-to-day, will I, as a family member, be empowered to select a curriculum that I trust and that's vetted by my sponsored teacher and my principal at my school? That will not change.
And so what about the learning plans, vendors, customized curriculum? All of that came up tonight as things people value.
Correct. And I think, you know, it sounds like some community members may be interpreting that because their school is a charter school, that's the reason why they have individualized learning plans and that's why they can choose their own curriculum. It's actually because they're a correspondence program, why that's a programmatic element of their school. So that will not change because they will remain a correspondence program. The only thing that's shifting is the way that the school is governed. Currently, the principal is governed by a group of parent volunteers called an academic policy committee. And now if this motion is approved, that would transition into a district governance model just like the majority of our schools in the district.
Thank you. Okay, let me go around. No? Let's see. Member Higgins is good. Member Lessons?
I'm going to ask for Amanda's help at this time. If you could please send out the papers that I asked to print. Oh, thank you. So I wanted to begin by thanking all of our speakers, especially our students who've taken the time to be here tonight to speak about Family Partnership Charter School. Between November and December of 2021, I led the board's recharter of this correspondence school by amending the administration's recommendation for a five-year recharter to a 10-year recharter. I then proposed an amendment that FPCS be eligible for an expanded student cap upon a review in 2024-25, showing no further violations. As I spoke to those motions last winter, I recognized that families in ASD and across the nation have demonstrated an expanded interest in homeschooling. I stressed that flexibility within the FPCS approach has supported students' unique needs and their family's goals. And I shared that I was confident that the four very specific prior APC violations that were detailed in that recharter memo had been addressed and that new protocols were in place to prevent those violations from recurring. So before I say anymore, I want to say that I still believe that homeschooling can provide exceptional educational opportunities to motivated students and engaged families. And I see each and every one of you as examples of that. But given that this memorandum is now underscoring, as we've discussed, that extensive APC infighting since the recharter has, quote, "been harmful to family partnership students," I spent a great deal of time, hence my comment a few minutes ago about reading two years of minutes, trying to understand how students have been harmed over the past year. So to answer that, in addition to reading all of those minutes, I reviewed and I compiled for other board members FPCS student outcomes in a manner akin to our regular goal monitoring process. This board, after all, has adopted a student outcomes-focused model of governance. We have our board goals up on the walls. And as many of you may be aware, we have an annual calendar. We spiral through our goals to review rates of reading and math proficiency in the fall, growth in those areas midway through the year, along with college career life indicators like Algebra II completion, AP course completion, graduation rates. I think we can add attendance to that mix now as well. So my own review of these student outcomes, quite frankly, surprised me because despite frequent attestations of students very high proficiency in core subjects, the records that we have reveal that students at Family Partnership are significantly undertested. Indeed, in the 2022 recharter documents that I got through the state, a note regarding the school's exceedingly low Alaska School Performance Index rating explains that in that ASPI system, quote, "all non testers are considered non proficient." So I'll dive into that rates of undertesting in a moment. And I wanted to share that my review of those couple of years of meeting minutes suggests that the bodies that the APCs chronic inattention to student outcomes, they do have really stuck out at me. And this contrasted with some patterns I noticed when I looked at this peak debt frontier charter school. For example, there was some data monitoring, some goal monitoring happening. So I guess for me, the FPCS APC's inattention to student outcomes since being rechartered is where I perceive the greatest harm to students potentially lies. And so I'll just kind of walk board members through this for the record. So I was looking first at our reading proficiency for K-2 students. And if we look at what our data shows for the fall, about 35% of our K-2 students at FPCS were assessed as at-risk or some risk for their core sort of reading components. This increased to 51% in the winter. Then I looked again at the numbers and we only had 45 and 41 students tested out of about 427. So that's a testing rate of 10%, give or take a percent. When I looked at our math data for the math growth for grades three through nine, which is another part of our goal monitoring that we do for all of our schools and all the district. Again, I'll just get down to it. It looks like about 21% of our grades three through nine students were tested and about 20% of our students, in the 21% in the fall and 20% in the winter. And I think that if you look at the numbers of those students who have not been tested, I think that, so if you go back to that K-2 early reading skill, the fast bridge testing that didn't happen, that's over 400 young students who really didn't get data on the foundational skills. That means that their sponsored teachers, their parents may not know, they may, but they may not know the specific areas, phonological, phonemic awareness that we've been talking about, that people across the state are talking about. And I think that's potential harm. In math, more than 700 students in grades three through nine haven't had that math growth assessment this year. So again, this is all since the recharter. When I looked at last spring's AK Star testing, this is the state summative report, 37 students demonstrated proficiency of the 79 students that were tested, but there were 681 students who were eligible. So that's an 11%, 11.6% testing rate. For grade three reading on the AK Star test, six individual students out of 102 eligible students were tested. We don't have proficiency rates on those six students. So those are just sort of like some of those formative and summative assessments. We can also look at the college career life indicators tend to look at, I don't know, broader data sets. So the AP course completion rates, we just reviewed them for the district. For FPCS, they're substantially lower for 2020, the 21 and the 22 school years than the comprehensive high schools as a whole. This past year, 10.6% of Family Partnership students took and passed an AP course, whereas on average, 17% of students across the district as a whole. Then I looked at our four-year grad, four and five-year graduation rates. And Family Partnership has substantially lagged ASD in the graduation rates for the past six years. And in the five-year graduation rates, they only tested ASD as a whole this past year. Like, none of that is easy and it doesn't really align with the narratives that we've been hearing about highly successful students. I know that there are highly successful students, but what we have is highly undertested students. And if our board, if one of the main things that we're doing is continuous goal monitoring, then that's what I think our academic policy committees should be doing at least a little bit in their meetings to make sure that those students are on task and are making the progress that I think everybody wants to see. So I also provided the board a list of the publicly available APC meeting minutes since the December 2020, 2020 recharter. And in none of those meetings was student discussion, was student data ever noted in the minutes. And in just a handful of them, was there any discussion of testing? So really, I mean, I support the homeschooling model, but given the weight that the administration of ASD and this board have decided to place on formative and summative assessments and their continuous monitoring to improve student outcomes, I think that the holes in the student outcome data suggest a compelling story about the need for accountability and improved avenues to support that give those, give our parents the tools they need as educators. So I will be supporting memo 129. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Any other comments, questions? We are back to the main motion, the original motion as amended to approve the termination of Family Partnership Charter Schools charter and transition the school from a charter school to an alternative correspondence school as amended. That is the motion before you.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Donley?
No.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
And that motion pass? That motion passes seven to one. Thank you, board. I'm sorry, six to one. My math wrong. That brings us, that brings us back to our agenda. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? I don't think so. No? Okay. Superintendent update?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, ASD board and community. You know, first, I would just like to say a few final words on our action item tonight regarding the transition of Family Partnership to a choice correspondence school. Because no matter what decision would have been made tonight, families would be disappointed and there would be many questions and concerns. So now that a decision has been made, it's time to pivot our focus to supporting the Family Partnership community and to earn the trust of all families to choose the wonderful opportunities the Family Partnership offers. It's time for us to begin the healing process and that won't happen overnight. But we will get there as an ASD family. So we received incredible testimony on how much of a difference the Family Partnership programming makes for our families. And my commitment is to minimize any impact on the day-to-day learning of the shift. Again, this proposal regarding the governance of the school and what will change is moving away from an academic policy committee model and moving towards an academic advisory council model. We've even amended the motion tonight to ensure that that happens. And that's a similar model that's actually used in MAPSU Central, which is another popular correspondence program locally. So in other words, the calendar, specifically the year-round calendar, the ways in which sponsored teachers are selected and support students will not change. Families can still work with their principal and sponsored teachers to select curriculum as they currently do, so long as it's consistent with federal and state regulations. Family Partnership has the largest allotment of correspondence programs in the state and that will not change. And Family Partnership's fund balance will continue to be earmarked for Family Partnership use. I realize that families may be hesitant to trust that that's the case, but I will hold true to my word. This transition stems from challenges at the governance level and I expect school operations will largely be unchanged. And above all, I want Family Partnership to be successful. It is an ASD school. It's always been an ASD school that offers something special to our families. Dissolving the academic policy committee is a necessary step to double down on keeping the focus on student outcomes and learning. So we'll be sending a communication to families this week to provide an overview of what's next and continue to update our FAQ page with timely information. So moving on to a different topic. I am committed to keeping the focus on our board goals and guardrails and focus areas. So everything from sixth grade to middle school, our new ELA curriculum and a proposal to expand the professional learning communities district-wide, this is an opportunity to move the needle. We're also closely tracking conversations in June and I'm hopeful a positive change in school funding will happen. Of course, the rising cost of healthcare, labor, and maintenance could still mean that ASD will operate in a deficit even with the funding increase. So I do want to manage the public's expectation. Our best-case scenario puts us at about the status quo and that could mean a deficit. Or less could mean a deficit, rather. And on a related note, I'm pleased to share that I'll be earning my certificate in education finance next week from the Georgetown University Edonomics Lab. Edonomics Lab does great work in helping districts and school boards conceptualize how to navigate complex budgetary situations in resource-scarce environments. Sound familiar? So a thank you to the Edonomics Lab for offering me a full scholarship so that this is cost-neutral at that. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Any questions for Dr. Bryant on his report? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to our J1, School Board and Administration comments. Member Higgins, let's start with you because you're, it's about 2:00 AM where you are.
Yeah, and I also know you can press mute me and I understand how that works. It's okay, Mr. Madam President. Let me say, I want to first start off by thanking the superintendent. Hearing the comments that came back from the type of communication taking place with the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School was very positive. I think it's sincere. And I have, being on the board now for 11 years and I haven't heard any charter school give a report so positive. So my appreciation greatly there. I will say the selection of principals recently done, that family members involved in that and all I got from them and friends was positive as well. So the idea of working with them and working with the parents and trying to listen and be responsive has been very positive. So my appreciation, Mr. Superintendent. Let me, on regards to, I feel like everybody needs to provide some explanation of where they were on the Family Partnership. You know, from my standpoint, you joined the Ancre School Board, you take notes. We're going to uphold the Constitution. We're going to uphold all, everything else that's out there. And if we're not getting everything done that we need to get done in terms of policies and reporting relationships, then we've got a problem. And I'm surprised that we got to the point where we did. I expected the APC would go and say, oh, you know, in order to keep the charter school, we'll go ahead and step aside and do it. And that just wouldn't happen. That still surprises me a little bit. We had problems in the past and I thought we would have some type of movement. But it's more kind of a view that the charter school is a private school. It's an Ancre School District school. That hasn't changed either way. And so that's a little bit of a disappointment for me that we moved the way we did, but it was necessary and it was a right decision to make, in my opinion. And I appreciate the efforts there to provide them an opportunity to say what they're willing to do, to resolve this, and it wasn't there. But there was good effort there and I appreciate the comments from all the family, all the parents and the staff that testified. I just want to say thank you. I know some were in favor of doing this. Majority were against it, but there was a lot of misinformation out there as if to say, well, the rules are going to apply now because now we're a public school. We were a public school all the time. And that's just a bit of a disappointment area in line with it, but I'm appreciative of all the comments they had to make. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's just start with to my left, Member Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam President. Did want to, as always, express appreciation for those who came out to testify tonight. Those who were willing to utilize their own time to provide perspective and make governance happen, I think should be applauded and I appreciate it. Did want to highlight a testimony opportunity this week, SB 99, which would incorporate a requirement for financial literacy statewide. Is happening Wednesday at 3:30 on the Senate side. I would urge us to consider speaking in favor, given the board's support of financial literacy curriculum. I had the opportunity to sit in an economics class at Eagle River High School, one of the pilot programs this year. And it was heartening because some of the things that are happening because some of the things that are happening now in our classrooms, I've been working with my foster youth on for a decade. We talked about things like school bonds, the difference between renting and owning a home, expenses, how property taxes are calculated, things that I learned well into adulthood. And seeing light bulbs turn on was impressive and exciting. So Wednesday, 3:30, and you are welcome to visit the other two programs or Eagle River, because I think those classes are going on now.
And thank you very much, Member Donley.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm very excited about the financial, personal finance development of that course curriculum for our district also. I'm grateful that the board's adopted that as a priority. I remain very concerned about how few instructional hours per year our state is requiring in our schools. It's so, so much less than most other states are requiring. And that's why I'm still very concerned about the proposal to utilize instructional hours for the planning periods in those, in the current development that we heard in the work session. And it's just, you know, we've been arguing about this for years with just even small, just a couple of minutes out of the day being too much. So anything that's going to reduce instructional hours, I just really think the burden is, there's a great burden to prove that that's what the proper course moving forward is.
Thank you, Member Donley.
All right, let's go, Member Wilson.
I also want to thank all of the folks that came out to testify tonight. I just want you to know that we did listen. And I am excited about the potential for a new positive for, new positive path for our family partnership, partnership families. And I appreciate as well our families that came out to testify in support of ANCCS. So I know you guys are doing good work, so thank you for that. I'll keep it short. I just wanted to recognize that it is the month of the military child. So I appreciate all of the, our military is doing in our community and them recognizing their children and all of their contributions to, to the military as well, as well as our next communications meeting, which is going to be on April 27th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got it, noon?
Okay. Thank you. Member Lessons?
Yeah, I, for sake of expediency, I didn't pull memorandum 119 tonight, but I wanted to take a moment to recognize that it is an extraordinary grant for about 100 Creekside K2 students. And it's going to, it's, I think it's funding from deed. It's going to cultivate a beautiful partnership with parents and staff, give parents information about their students' education. It's going to give teachers additional professional development. There's some new technology involved. And there are field trips, and there's a focus on enriching that learning environment. So I wish, I wish them the best of luck this coming summer. And I wanted to extend an appreciation for music and the arts. I know, I think that the ASD Art Show is still going strong at the Anchorage Museum. I think I get to help celebrate some orchestra students next week, one night. And I really enjoyed attending a recent Service High School Theater production of Little Shop of Horrors this past week, with a member of the legislature watching his son perform. But I also know that other school's spring productions also took place this past weekend. I couldn't be at all of them at once. So next year, let's work on scheduling them on different weekends so board members can go to all of them, because I think they're the best-kept secret in town. And we have a finance committee on Wednesday at noon.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Member Holloman?
Being off Member Wilson, I think our next governance committee meeting must be April 27th. But I'm kind of guessing. I didn't really look at it. I did want to reinforce something that Member Higgins said. A couple of weeks ago, I was talking with a member of the community who didn't have a child in school yet, but I mentioned something about some of our charter schools. He goes, I'll, he goes, "I don't think any public money should be spent on charter schools." I go, "These are public schools. They're part of the Anchorage School District." He goes, "That's not my understanding." And I've had this experience in other states where I'm talking with educators and talk about the fact that charter schools in Alaska are uniquely different from any other state. And they go, "No, not really." I go, "No, really?" And they go, "There's a catch somewhere." So unfortunately, I have the feeling that some folks in Anchorage may feel that as well, that charter schools aren't really part of the district. They are. They're under our rules. They're under state law. They're under all those policies. But they do have a unique structure, and I think it's awesome that we have so many different kinds of schools within our district. And folks talking about the programs, one of the things you hear, it might substitute the word ABC or Open Opjul Amontasori or any number of others. It's like, well, that program works really well. Why don't we make them all like that? And it's because having one program for all our kids doesn't work. Having different programs for each of our kids is what works. And of course, family partnership, I think, has the most unique things inside of one school, of any of our schools, because it really can be very unique program for each and every individual child. And we need to absolutely maintain that. The other thing I wanted to call to the attention of the board is that when the governance committee met last time, we did not have a quorum, so we couldn't conduct any business. But we did ask President Bellamy to put ASD memorandum 135 on the non-action for today. The revision to the school board policy, 5142.3, restraint and seclusion. It was in line with the agreements with the Justice Department to settle a suit. And it is wording that most, I think almost everybody on the board has seen before, because we had quite a few people in attendance at the previous governance committee meeting. But it will come to you in two weeks as an action item. And if you have questions, it's somewhere. This foster will make it happen. If, if you, if you can't figure out where something is, I always just text her, and magically it appears. So I would urge you to do that, too. But there's nothing surprising in the language. It's very much in line with what was outlined to us by our legal counsel, and I think everybody will be fine with that. Last thing, I was unable to attend the Anchorage, or the Alaska Science Fair, even though I meant to, but I had to make a quick trip out of town on Saturday. This is something I remember from a long time ago when ASD was a huge sponsor of it. And it used to be at East High School, and it took up an enormous amount of space and tons of elementary kids, and of course, a lot of secondary kids. ASD has stepped back as a sponsor. It's no longer held on ASD property. It was in the dome, I think, for space or change point. It was somewhere with a lot of room. But several people that talked to me about it lamented the fact that this isn't something we're engaged in any longer. And in talking with some of the staff, there was a time when we had a math department, and we had a science department. And at times, the science department had co-directors and several teacher experts assigned to it and administrative assistant support. It's now one person that is doing that office. And she said, "Simply do not have bandwidth to communicate with all the elementary teachers and all the secondary." We can send out an email and let people know this is happening, but if we're going to have participation, it really means someone at each building has to do it. The upshot is very little participation by elementary students in it now, which is unfortunate. And I, it's one of those things that I would use as an example, if I'm back in Juneau again, which I plan to be, of things that went away simply because we could no longer afford the staffing. It takes a lot of time to get a couple of hundred or 300 kids shepherded through these projects. And the elementary curriculum is very crowded to the detriment of science. Reading and math are kind of the stars on that. I get that, but as a science teacher, it makes me very sad. But I just want to put it out there for board members and the public to know. There's so much we've given up in this district. 25 years ago, we had more electus, we had more variety, we, we had more supports. And the, you know, the long flat periods was an occasional bump up on the BSA. I mean, in the flat years, something's got to be trimmed down a little bit. Diesel fuel goes up, insurance goes up, food costs go up, all that other stuff goes up, and we just have to pay it. We have to find a little bit less to do. Not have an addendum for some things we used to have addendums for. And sometimes they continue a little bit because teachers will step up and volunteer. But without us really putting the resources behind it, you don't get the same kind of results as you used to. So I, I hope people will stick to the Science Fair in their mind. I hope to be there next year. I hate I missed it. It's a fantastic thing, and they're often looking for judges to, to give feedback to the kids. Every kid gets judged and talked to, and, and things get explained. But it's the kind of thing that used to be part of what made Anchorage so great. And we need to, we need to find a way to get it back again somehow. A lot of apologies to the, the parents of family partnership, and I don't blame them for being home asleep or on their way home asleep. But this really did not come up suddenly, and I'm sorry that so many parents felt like it did. Has more to do with communication inside of the school and failures by the policy committee. And it, I, I don't think we had a lot of choices, unfortunately. And if we had to decide it tonight, it, it had to go the way it did. But we do have a really good model of how it's worked for a very long time, and we'll all be watching as the superintendent goes forward with it. And coming up with a way that actively engages parents without having an academic policy committee has the potential to be something that I hope we can push out to all of our schools eventually. But I think the, the family partnership is a great place to start because that culture is there and the expectation is there. And hopefully, that can be something that we, we develop and then transfer to our other alternative schools and perhaps our neighborhood schools as well. So, you know, in case you had spare time, that's probably going to take up some of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. When I go last, everybody said everything I was going to say, but I do want to thank the staff for the work session today and sharing the data from the survey on, with the school start and the PLCs. I look forward to another discussion. I mean, I know we gave you guys some things to consider. We are still in the middle of all things legislative, so I want to thank, oh my, Member Jacobs, Member Lessons, Member Wilson. I know you guys have all been really actively, and Member Holloman, testifying. He even flew to Juneau to testify. For it, for, for education legislation. So please, it's not over, and we've got a lot more work to do, but I really do thank the help that we've gotten, as well as from the staff. Because that's important work, and we've got to give that attention. I just want to give a shout out to the South Choir Festival. It was amazing. That took place after our last meeting, and also the Middle School Band Festival. I got to be the emcee. It was a lot of fun. Do, a shout out also to our communications department, the bond coverage, the trifold, the information on the website, all of it was amazing. I appreciate it. Thank you for that. And then just embrace the Easter Bunny and have fun this weekend with your family. That's all I have today. Dr. Bryant, you have any last minute comment?
No further comments. Have a good night and safe travels home, everyone.
All right. Moved to adjourn. Second, moved in second to adjourn. Hearing no opposition, we are adjourned.